I saw it on the board. You need to get, uh, comps and wages over there. Well, I made his wages like forty bucks a second, you know?
He's gotta put up with all you guys. I mean, he can handle it if only he needs it.
Is that insulting or like sixty bucks?
Don't insult him.
He didn't realize he got a bacon here.
Obvious. By default, maybe, but at one time. Well, in lieu of the mayor.
I know.
Record, what's your record?
No.
I don't think we've started yet, but I think today is okay. Sure we have, but, you know. Let's check for minutes. Alright, so is everybody finally ready to go? Sorry, sorry. I am, I am set. Alright, we're ready whenever you are back there. Oh, Nathan, not you yet. Thank you though. You're right on the ball. He's prepared. I was pointing to that wall behind you.
Well done.
Everybody's ready.
Alright, welcome everyone to the December third, two thousand thirteen Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Beckman, could you please call the role?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Heitzman.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. All stand for the pledge led by Nathan from the Boy Scouts today. Right up here, whenever, whenever you're ready to go.
Um, please join me in the pledge, ladies.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done, Nathan. Thank you very much. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Men from staff. Council Clay.
I want you to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Assembly Councilor Heitzman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Anything to remove or add from consent from staff? Council?
Four F four.
Four F four to remove. Anything else? Councilor Whiting.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Assemblywoman Councilor Clay, Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
This is Mayor. Four A one approves the transit policy plan and manual in response to two thousand thirteen Metropolitan Council FTA compliance audit. Four B one declares two forfeited vehicles a surplus property and authorizes proper disposal or sale of these items by the police department. Four D one recognizes Kristen Holt's successful completion of her initial one-year probationary period for new hires and grants her regular status in the position of communications coordinator. Four F one approves the payment of bills, electronic transfers, in the amount of eight hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars, ninety-four cents. Four F two approves minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand thirteen city council meeting. Four F three approves the application and grants from SARS surplus licenses to Todd Overwald, employee of Izend Spa sixteen sixty-seven, uh, seventeenth Avenue. Four F four was removed from consent agenda and four F five approves the application and grants a cigarette, excuse me, tobacco license to E Sig Store of Shakopee LLC located at thirteen forty-five Heather Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNeil. Any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Uh, you'll have, uh, five minutes to speak. I know, uh, we have one person here tonight. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak during the open forum? Mr. Saxon, you're on. Please again state your name, address, and sign in.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, um, and address the greater community on TV. And I'm here representing, uh, more than fifty of my fellow neighbors. Um, I would appreciate not being interrupted during this time. I only have five minutes, so welcome any questions at the end of my statement. And I have a stopwatch with me, which I'll start right now to make sure that I don't exceed the, the five-minute limit that is afforded me. I note that recent publication of the mayor and the city with regard to, uh, the mayor becoming the business mayor in the face of the community. And, um, I think this is a very good thing for our community. We need an active mayor in helping to expand our growing business within the community. However, not at the expense and without the testimony of the people who live within it. At the Shakopee City Council Meeting of November nineteenth regarding, uh, curb-to-curb's property, uh, curb-to-curb's use of the property at fourteen eighty-third Avenue, I expressed the concern that a number of my fellow neighbors had not received any notification of the meeting. I know this is not an isolated case and that I've talked to a lot of neighborhood, neighbors, and, um, I've heard people say, "How did that get approved and started?" without my knowledge. Uh, the reaction of the staff, the commission, the council, and the mayor was not to express concern that people hadn't received notification and hadn't gotten the opportunity to give testimony at public hearing, but rather to the adherence to a bureaucratic process which was set up to ensure that very thing. It was implied at the council meeting that the city attorney had issued a opinion with regard to the propriety of the public notice. I received a letter recently dated November twenty-second from the Assistant Assistant City Administrator in which she, uh, wrote that the city attorney did not prepare a written legal opinion. Rather, he received a draft of the staff memo and verbally conveyed to the community development director that he agreed with the material as presented. I have not heard at any time since, and that's two months ago, that the issue that was raised, that the process is to be reviewed to ensure that it is serving the purpose for which it was established. Nobody's brought that up. Are we to conclude from that, that the community officials and elected representatives really don't want to hear from the citizenry? Furthermore, when I presented a petition signifying that the vast majority of the community immediately surrounding the site are in opposition to the text amendment and proposed use, you, Mr. Mayor, and councilors did not for one sentence address their concerns. I presented information relative to the damage that the user could inflict in our community, the county, the state, and our country. It affect, uh, the environment due to the sweepings which contain toxins, including but not limited to heavy metals, petroleum, hydrocarbons, phthalates, bacteria, zinc, chlorides, pesticides, herbicides, metal acetates, chromium, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are cancer-causing carcinogens. Together with the environmental cleanup, which curb-to-curb advertises as, um, doing, which contains hazardous waste, all of which will be stored and processed on the site. And again, no relevant comment was made. I understand the need for business, but I'm concerned about our, our zeal to locate any business in the city. I believe that consideration that the issue might warrant further study and examination to approve the text amendment to allow the industrial business to apply for conditional use permit to locate in the business zone should have been afforded. We realize that the waste has to be stored and processed somewhere, but certainly not next to a residential district. And certainly not adjacent to a retention pond which was built to drain the site and take the drainage to the river. That river, of course, flows into the Mississippi and flows through the entire country. We once again urge you to take our concerns seriously and respectfully request that all of the citizens listed on the petition be given notice of all public meetings to be held relative to the city's approval of the applicant's conditional use permit and to withhold any further action until proper studies can be undertaken to determine what the consequences would be as a result of the text amendment allowing the conditional use of the property located on either side of Highway sixty-nine from Tenth to the railroad bridge and specifically curb-to-curb's proposed use to store, process, industrial, and hazardous waste at fourteen eighty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Saxon. If you look at your stopwatch, if yours says the same as mine?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate your concern. Um, just to recap, everyone, there is a, a business that would like to move near the, uh, townhomes that Mr. Saxon, um, has a relationship with, and he would definitely like the company not to be in there, and we, um, are going through a CUP, conditional use permit process at this time where, uh, the concerns that he just brought up will be addressed through that CUP process. So, uh, is there any other comments from council we'd like to make at this time? Council Lehman?
I have two questions, Mayor. The first one for Mr. Saxon is, do you have any, uh, proof as of right now that curb-to-curb's sweepings have what you claim are in there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lehman, um, I do not have any proof. However, the state, um, says that PAHs are generated by the asphalt covering that you put on parking lots and driveways.
Which state?
Pardon?
Which state?
The state of Minnesota.
Okay.
And in fact, they've outlawed the use of it beginning January one of two thousand fourteen. So, while I don't have any direct data with regard to the testing, I do know that the state is very concerned about those toxins and carcinogens getting into the street sweepings. That's the reason they street, that they sweep the streets, is to make sure it doesn't go into the stormwater system. Now, what we're gonna do is take a concentration of all those street sweepings, and we're gonna put it on this site.
Alright. Council Lehman, you have a second question?
Environmentally sensitive site.
Second question is, the, uh, list of the folks on the petition, and this is probably for staff, did it have addresses assigned to each name? And do we know if them addresses are within the required distance or outside the distance required?
Members of the council, Mr. Saxon, and members of the audience, following the public hearing at the planning commission, we reviewed the list of properties, um, that were provided by the applicant for the public hearing on the text amendment and requested rezoning. And as you recall, you denied the rezoning and regiding of the property. Um, it was consistent with the three hundred and fifty-foot requirement. It did have specific addresses. It did have specific property owner's name, names. We did find that one of the property owner's listed address had changed when we checked further. Another that was pointed out by Mr. Saxon at that public hearing had not changed. Um, I don't know who's on his list, but you should be aware that in connection with the CUP, I've directed that we would send notices to all of the townhouses in the projects adjacent to the site. I'm not sure what that total number is, and we probably will not include property owner's names. We'll be generating that at no expense to the applicant or any of the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Saxon. Alright, anyone else like to speak in the, uh, open forum this evening? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. A, uh, public meeting, proposed twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen tax levy, operating budget and cancellation of debt service, resolution number seventy-three eighty-nine, seventy-three ninety, and seventy-three ninety-one. Ms. Linehan.
Give me a moment to set up here.
And before we get started, just so everybody knows, this is a public meeting. We'll be, uh, letting folks talk, uh, for max of five minutes again. Um, once we get through, uh, a significant amount of discussion, uh, through council, and then we'll be, um, requesting public, uh, discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, council, viewing public, and the audience. Before you this evening will be a discussion that historically was referred to as a truth and taxation hearing. Several years ago, that process changed. It has now been moved to what is called a budget public meeting. It follows a little bit of the format that was originally implemented back in the days of the truth and taxation hearing. And what we have before you tonight are three separate resolutions. One that is to approve the levies, one to approve the twenty fourteen budget, one to approve debt service cancellation. Council will be asked to consider and approve these resolutions as presented. Once that approval has been obtained, the city staff then moves forward to confirm and, uh, basically place this information with Scott County, which is then implemented into the twenty fourteen property tax statements. Before that, I'll walk you through a short PowerPoint and also provide some recently received information on twenty fourteen property tax estimates that Scott County has provided on a variety of property values and property types. Are you ready?
I think so.
Does she only get five minutes?
We should be so lucky, huh?
Okay, you guys, you know how fast I can talk when I really get ramped, so here we go. Okay, before you, twenty fourteen property tax levy and twenty fourteen budget. One of the unique things that occurred during the twenty thirteen legislative session were two items very specific to the, uh, preparation of city budgets. First was the sales tax exemption, which has been under discussion for many sessions. At the last hour of the legislative session, action was taken and approved that provided a sales tax exemption for what was considered the majority of city purchases. In a nutshell, there is still a lot of discussion ongoing. In fact, the sales tax fact sheets that you can pull up from the Minnesota Department of Revenue are still under discussion. But ultimately, what it does provide is a sales tax exemption on areas of the city that include supplies, operating materials, some equipment. What is not real clear at this point is there are certain areas related to joint powers agreements, certain contractual costs. There are areas within, uh, elements of the city that could be conce, perceived as private entities that may not be sales tax exempt. We'll work through that, we'll keep council appraised. One of the requirements of the sales tax exemption was, we need to discuss this at tonight's meeting. Our very early estimate on how much is the savings to the city is potentially two hundred thousand, but until we iron out all the details of what's tax exempt and what is not, it's a very rough estimate. The other factor that occurred during the twenty thirteen legislative session was reinstatement of property tax levy limits. What that did is cap the general levy at three percent above the twenty thirteen rate. That was an item that has not been in place for several years for cities, but has, uh, provided a limit that, uh, we've brought into this year's budget and this year's levy. The operating budget of the city brings forward the discussions that started last May. Staff met with the department heads. We walked through, uh, issues relating to revenue analysis. We talked about, uh, projects with the CIP and other projects related to, uh, parks and, and other community development projects. We set a preliminary levy in September that included the maximum of the three percent increase from the twenty thirteen levy to the twenty fourteen. That was approved, that was certified to Scott County in September. That information has then been applied to the proposed property tax statements that were sent out in November to residents and commercial entities. This budget was refined internally in October and November. We've discussed many of the changes and, uh, specific details with council. And tonight is the public meeting and the adoption of the levies, the budgets, and the, uh, cancellation of debt. The revenues for the twenty fourteen budget, again, are fairly consistent with prior years. We've allowed for an increase in the three percent, which provides an additional nearly four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax levy dollars. The other significant increase, uh, in the general fund revenues under, uh, taxes is the lodging tax. Because we have one of the hotels that has been in construction in a full-year mode, twenty fourteen revenues have been, uh, allowed to reflect this. So when we get into expenditures, you'll see the offset to that is we in turn then flow those dollars to the CVB to pay for the portion. We retain five percent, ninety-five percent goes to the CVB. Intergovernmental revenues were increased based on discussions with engineering on state aid maintenance that has increased, uh, materially over the past few years. We've brought that increase based on history. And charges for services relating to, uh, services provided by police, engineering have also increased based on historical and the recently, uh, approved tribal contribution that the city receives for a number of years coming up. Those are items that will be, uh, brought into the twenty fourteen revenues. Expenditures, again, fairly consistent. New budget requests were discussed, presented to personnel, which we'll walk through in just a bit. Again, the lodging tax piece related to the increase, uh, for the additional funds being brought in through the new, uh, hotel expansions. There's a three percent wage increase. There is a zero percent increase for health insurance. Police and fire para, which impact the two departments as stated, have, uh, had, also had a legislative impact this year because there was an increase for both employee and employer contributions. That was approved by the legislature, that's been brought into the budget. And the twenty fourteen budget also reflects the full-year employee compensation cost for the increased, uh, personnel that was requested in the twenty thirteen budget but was hired throughout twenty thirteen. Twenty fourteen shows their full. We talked about the budget requests. These are the positions that have been added based on discussions with staff and council. These are the positions that primarily impact areas in administration and facilities. There was a detailed discussion with Mr. Looney regarding the engineering, the streets, the parks, the sewer. There's a significant adjustment and change in the structure and the planned programs within his department that lead to this request for several of these positions. Transfers are a major part of the city's budget also. There is a small amount of money that's transferred into the general fund each year. These are, uh, dollars from the two enterprise funds, the sewer fund and the stormwater. Those have been increased from seventy-five to ninety, and these are to cover costs related to a significant amount of work that is done in the general fund area relating to enterprise funds, everything from the audit to prepping the budget to detailing, uh, the rates and working with meth council, et cetera. The transfer's out, uh, we've discussed in great detail because these, these are significant to the city and they are a real core to what were the priorities of the twenty fourteen budget. The first being the capital improvement fund, increased from the twenty thirteen amount of five hundred thousand to the twenty fourteen request of seven hundred and fifty thousand. This is again keeping in mind a priority of the twenty fourteen budget to meet the infrastructure and capital needs of the city. EDA improvement, that is relating to the, uh, what was originally defined as a facade loan program. It's now expanded to an improvement loan program. And then the EDA funding for the positions and operations so that the city can continue to work closely with the organizations that have contacted us for recent economic development and growth. The general fund budget summary details out by the primary categories of the revenues, which consist of taxes, assessments, licenses, intergovernmental revenue, the charges for services, fines, and forfeits, and miscellaneous. Again, roughly twenty-two point two million dollar in revenues for the general fund. Expenditures, which are again the primary categories of general, public safety, public works, culture and rec, unallocated, which is a, a, uh, very small portion of the general budget. And the, uh, expenditures in total are approximately twenty-one point eight million. The transfers out, which we recently just discussed, were a million eight, and the transfers in of a million, of a hundred and eighty thousand, result in a shortfall in the budget of revenues to expenditures of just slightly under five hundred thousand. When we walk through where the revenue sources for the general fund budget fit in, as you can see, our primary composition of revenues comes into the area of taxes. That is what is comprised of the taxes, the fiscal disparities. We do not receive local government aid in the city of Shakopee, so when it comes to intergovernmental revenue, that fourth category, you'll see very little of that in Shakopee because there is not a lot of intergovernmental revenue coming in. The charges for services, those are primarily made up of the fees and the charges that we receive from Spock relating to those utility bills that are paid through Spock, but then, uh, come through to the city for stormwater and sewer. The general fund expenditures, again, trends follow what they have in the past. Primary composition that, uh, is Primary composition that is taking up the general fund expenditures is comprised of public safety, police, fire inspections.
Can I ask a question real quick on that last slide? Were the, is the, and probably the next one as well, were the 2011, 12, and 13, were those actuals or are those budgets?
The 11, 12 is actual. 14 is, or 13 is budget because we don't have year-to-date, and 14 would be budget.
Thank you.
Again, there is not a significant variance in what you're seeing year-to-year. Things remain fairly consistent in Shakopee. You don't see large variances and changes in the activity in, in the general fund budget. For a comparison, the 2013 tax levy was $15,303, a three percent increase of $459,000, which brings forward the request that you have before you tonight for the general fund levy of $15,793.20. There has been a request to add a debt service levy for the 2006 A debt service bonds. This is in result to a request as we started the budget process. To address the need to levy for the upcoming debt services, you've received tables, charts that flow out all of the debt service levies from 2006 up through 2012 and the years that they mature. We are working toward a consistent pattern of requesting levies for the debt service needs that cannot currently be met through the fund cash position or the special assessment collections. Also in this levy is the referenda levy, the fire building. Last year, $150,000 was levied. The request this year is to increase that to $175,000 as the actual debt service payment is slightly over $200,000. So we're trying to get that levy up close to what the actual debt service payment is. Tax levy dollars, as you can see, the majority of your levy goes right to the general fund. Very little of it goes to the debt service, the two specific ones, because those are the only two other levies at this point that are proposed to Scott County. The tax capacity rates are, again, this is always a discussion we have each year with budget. The task capacity is very much contingent on the market value. This is a year of which we've talked about since we've started the budget discussions and that Shakopee is very fortunate to benefit from approximately a 4.8% market growth. That allows for a growth of a levy with limited impact to your property taxes, and I'll show you these in the upcoming slides we have on impact of properties. The tax rate trend, it's been kind of flat for a number of years, took an increase last year when we took the increase in, the first increase in levies for a while, and has, again, because of the growth rate, your tax rate hasn't seen an increase. So it's a, it's a good composition. It's nice when you see these and you can put these charts out. And again, questions? Would you like me to go into?
Yeah, please.
Details before we?
Property tax impacts first, please. And then I think what I'd like to do is just go through council and ask any specific questions we have for Ms. Lenahan and Mr. McNeil, and then open it up to the audience after that.
Okay. I have, I have attempted to take out any identifiable information, so I apologize. I really hope I took everything out. So let me see if I can get these just a bit stronger. What, what is in front of you here tonight is, this is a property in Shakopee. It's a residential. It is a homesteaded property. Can you see that, or would you like me to zoom that up?
Sorry.
Okay.
Focus maybe.
Is it focused? Is it working? Focus. Okay. Yeah, that just isn't coming through, is it?
Close enough.
Yeah, that's good.
Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Example, this is a, a property that in 2013 had a value of $146,000 increased to $153,000. This is not uncommon. We're seeing minimal increases in values pretty much across the board, and I've pulled a lot of properties in Shakopee, so this is pretty much what we're seeing. The next line is the favorite topic of Councilmember Clay, the homestead exclusion, who, if he would like to go into the description of what this program is, we'll let him. Again, this is applicable to homes that are of a certain value under, and it takes the taxable market value and reduces that. Based on what you see on the taxable market value, which was $121,000 in 2013 and $129,000 in 2014, we are looking at a 2013 property tax of approximately $1,780. This property would see a slight property increase of $1,804, or approximately $24, okay? Let's move this up to a little different value. And if you don't want to see all the details, give me a holler because I can go on a long time on this. This value is interesting. It's $174,001, wound up just a very small increment, which didn't even change the market value exclusion, so you had a taxable market value of $152,500 and $153,500. The impact, and I apologize because these did not print out real clearly. The impact was the taxes in 2013 were $22,260. The taxes in 2014, based on this preliminarily submitted levy, is $21,400, declined.
I miss it. Why is that?
What was the value again?
The value at the taxable market value is $153,500.
$175,000.
Okay. Okay, so this is, this is what was interesting. That's when I started getting in here and pulling this apart. I had to keep pulling because it was really interesting what was coming up. And yes, I need a life.
Oh, to hang out with Julie.
Huh?
Oh, to hang out with Julie is so much fun.
Yeah, just a lot of fun. Let's take a value just slightly higher, $190,000 that saw no increase in value. Again, same market value exclusion, $20,100 each year. Then you got this market value of $169,900, okay? Absolutely nothing changed. The property taxes went from $24,600 to an estimated $23,520. Okay?
And those are going down because our tax capacity has gone up, correct?
The tax capacity is moving up.
Okay.
And that's a factor we anticipate seeing in future years. Now, let's get into the $200,000 range. I got a property here at 2024, took a little higher increase of about $5,000. You went from a market value of $183,400 to a market value of $191,200. Property taxes went from $26,520 to $26,400. So even when you get up in a little higher value, you're still seeing a decline.
Julie, can you explain just real quick why the tax capacity has gone up, just so everybody knows?
The tax capacity is based on the general tax value in the community. So as you see, a lot of increases in values in, in smaller increments have added up to significantly increased value. That whole factor, and I've got another slide I can show you that really explains, when you increase values and you don't see those declines that you saw for the last four or five years, it can make a big impact on how your levies impact property taxpayers. If you get up just a little higher here, you're into a tax amount, and let's just go with the taxable market value. Went from $241,000 to $240,000. This one took just a slight decrease. There aren't too many of them. I dug through a lot and I cannot find many decreases. Their property tax went from $34,880 to $33,240. One thing that sometimes comes up and is very confusing, and I think as councilmembers, you sometimes get calls on this. You may have individuals who do not have their property homesteaded. They may live in another community, have a home here. What that does is, this is an example of a home, kept its value, $225,000, does not get market value exclusion because they don't have it homesteaded. Your values here are $225,000, $225,000. Again, this is a, a feature that I think is very hard for people who have not dealt in the arena of, of non-homesteaded homes. They have a property value and a property tax rate that is significantly higher than a non-homesteaded home. Just wanted to present this for you if you do receive calls.
That's, that's a commercial property.
Really? County told me it was residential.
Well, if you go back, that, the tax rate doesn't work.
Okay.
Seventy-five hundred on a $220,000.
Sorry, I will, I'll check into that because usually they CI'd everything that was commercial. Okay, well then you go into my next question here. This is a commercial property they sent over. Fairly substantial value, $850,000. Now you'll notice on the commercial, homestead exclusion doesn't apply. You go down here into the taxes, the estimates. Taxes in 2013, $32,236. Taxes in 2014, $32,200. Let's boost that up a little. Take one more look here. Million one, million one. Forty-two, 138, forty-two, zero nine two. Okay? Just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of if you take different parcels around the community and you bring those forward, that's what we are already seeing as estimates on the tax statements. One of the work papers that you've seen us bring forward before is the one that's really, really hard to see. So let's see what we can do here. Do y'all remember this one? Let's see if we can bring, bring this up a little. When you talked about the tax rate, Mr. Mayor. Let me see if I can get this a little larger. This is the work paper that I work with at Scott County. It takes the tax capacity of 2013, roughly $39 million. As you see, this has increased based on the details provided by Scott County. And really, it's got to straighten out here. Okay. Tax capacity increased up to $40 million. Now, tax increment financing factors impact this slightly. The fiscal disparity factor impacts this. Now I will tell you, I don't have the final fiscal disparity numbers yet from Scott County. They're still working on it. It will come, but it doesn't create anything that I would consider negative. In fact, anything, it'll come out positive. So based on this, and then based on the levy that was approved in 2013, $15,333, versus the levy that was proposed tonight, $15,793, you can see the tax rate declines. And that's how that whole comes, that whole calculation comes through. So based on that, what we have before you this evening, and this is where it gets back to the pieces that we're asking your approval on. We're asking approval of resolution, let me get this down, $7,389, which allows for the levy as presented, the fire referendum levy and the 2006 A debt service levy. The second item is to ask approval of the 2014 budget based on the major companies within the city's general fund. The third item requesting your approval is the cancellation of the debt service levies that are being paid through fund balance, cash position, assessments, interest, et cetera. These are the, these are the issues that currently are not being levied, and we need to submit to the county a tax, debt service cancellation request. There's a lot of other data, and it was in your packet, but I'm going to just stop and ask for questions or any other issues that we could address.
All right, perfect. We'll start on this then. Councilwoman Whiting?
On the budget side, the revenues portion of that, under assessments, licenses and fines, 2014 you have budgeted a lot lower than the collection from 2013. Are we optimistic or just kind of?
I budget those very conservatively.
Conservatively?
Very conservatively. It, it has not been a bad process, as I've done historical budgeting to do that. It does provide us less exposure.
Okay, thank you. Any other major questions or concerns about the budget to ask about now? Councilwoman Whiting?
No, I'm just proud to see that we're working on that debt service levy. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Lehman?
The general fund expenditures by, by division.
Right.
Forty-four fleet. Twenty thirteen, seventy-four, nine fifty.
Right.
I assume that's a, a number from today.
Correct.
Close to today. And then the preliminary for 2014 is twenty-six, seven.
Right.
Substantially less.
Right. What, what we're looking at is, we're making some changes, Mr. Looney and Mr. Hollander and Gene and I have been looking at a lot of the different ways in which the practices of the fleet are being handled so that they more accurately are charged in and out to other departments, and this fleet area does not carry so much of the cost.
Okay. Then the second question I have is, the properties that you showed are paying very little in additional taxes. If there was no new development in town, then I would assume other properties must have saw an increase. As one of the charts that you showed, just the last chart, showed the properties and their market value, what number went up, what number stayed the same?
This is the piece you're referencing, Councilmember Lehman.
Yep.
This is the one where we ask Scott County to tell us roughly what percentage of the properties saw an increase, what percentage saw a decrease, based on history, based on, you know, their current calculations. Can you see that clear enough? Can I maybe push this in a little? It's, it's interesting. They have what I would call a fairly evenly proportioned analysis. It does appear that if you took the percent change of zero, if you took that forty-one, that sixteen, and that seventeen, you've got the majority of your property payers there in between that down five and up five. And that's where the majority of your properties fit in.
I was gonna take the note change.
Uh huh.
And put them with the declined and put the one to five percent and up.
Okay.
That's how I split them.
Okay.
So I had $7,000 to $3,000, $3,500.
Mm-hmm.
And I know my shop, $800 tax increase in one year, so that was pretty substantial on a business.
You had between 2013 and 14?
For 2014.
Did you see a substantial increase in your value?
Well, the value must have went up if the tax went up.
Okay.
Substantial or?
Yeah, and I was wondering if there's a, there's an area that we're seeing, the fifteen plus and the ten plus, and a five to ten. Is there, is that defined or is it just across the board?
It's random. It's across the board. That's the interesting part because as we went through and tried to poll, and I was working with Michael and individuals at Scott County, it is extremely random. It's, it's, and, and Mr. Clay has, yes, something to insert there.
What, what this chart is including is the, any new construction values that
Right.
affected the differences, so.
It's like apples to apples, thirteen to fourteen.
Well, you know, you can anticipate five to 10% of properties had an increase in market value because they
Added a garage, put on a deck.
Added a garage, basement finished, replaced, you know, something that was in bad repair or, you know, recited new windows, things like that. Those sorts of things will increase your market value because you've invested money into the home to cause the market value to be higher, not because of market trends in general. And also, for the ones that are going down, you know, there are, there are homes that lack, have been lacking in maintenance and where the assessor will all of a sudden doing their once every five year inspections will get around to this house and see, okay, well, this has not enjoyed the kind of typical maintenance you expect to see in the neighborhood. And sometimes values are lowered because of that. And that's not, an adjustment for that factor is not represented in this
That's true.
this particular graph that we're, or numbers we're looking at.
And I was just asking a generic question, or if we were seeing the 10% and up specific to a type or use of property. Was it business, is it?
Not that, yeah. Not that we could put our hands on. No, we are still working. I'm still tracking because there's parts of this. As we just received some of this just last Wednesday, and we're still tracking some of the data.
And this spreadsheet is purely residential.
Right.
This that we're looking at right now is only residential.
This is purely residential.
And the last question I would have, and maybe Councilmember Clay could ask, answer it, but the, the home exclusion portion, does that, I shouldn't say artificially, but does that tend to move the, an increase into a residential direction above a certain dollar amount?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, I, you want me to do my speech?
You go ahead. You're doing great on that. You go ahead. You're doing great on that.
We'll invite him back next year.
Let me then back up a little bit, and before I talk about that market value exclusion, let me talk about the, you've mentioned the tax capacity value of the city has gone up, and the thing you need to understand is that taxes are not based, you know, the tax rate isn't charged against your market value. It's multiplied against the tax capacity of the property.
Right.
The tax capacity of a residential home is calculated at one percent of the first five hundred thousand dollars in value and one point two five percent of any value above the first five hundred thousand. Now, commercial properties, it's like one and a half percent of the first hundred and fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
And as the value goes up, it gets even higher. Commercial industrial properties generally pay, or almost always pay a higher percentage of their market value in taxes because their tax capacity calculation is higher. So, the total tax capacity valuation of the city is not only impacted by how much marketing has increased generally, but what parts of the market, since there's a higher percentage of tax capacity going to commercial industrial properties. If those properties have increased or decreased more than residential properties, you're gonna see an even bigger change in the total value. So at the end of the year, you know, we add up all of the tax capacities from all the residential properties, all the commercial properties, total them up, and then total up all the money that we, sitting here along with our cohorts and at the county and the school district, decide to spend, divide the money we want to spend into that tax base to get that tax rate. That is then applied to each individual property.
Correct.
Finally, to get back to your question, the homestead or the market value exclusion is something a few years ago that was created by the legislature. It replaced what used to be the old homestead credit. The homestead credit was calculated for people using the same pretty much calculation they use for the homestead or market value exclusion, but back in the old days when it was a credit, they subtracted the money from your tax bill. But the state then repaid the cities and the counties and the school districts from that money that was subtracted off your bill. But then the state went broke, and they didn't do that anymore, or they promised to but didn't, and and so they finally gave up and said, okay, we're gonna do away with the homestead credit and replace it instead with this market value exclusion. But they're not, the state isn't offering or paying any money to make up for that exclusion amount. The exclusion is calculated, boy, I'm gonna bore people here now, by taking, excludes forty percent of the first seventy-six thousand dollars in value.
Can we take notes?
Which is thirty thousand and four hundred dollars, I think.
That's correct.
But, as the market value increases above that first seventy-six thousand, it starts subtracting from that original exclusion at nine percent. So the higher the value goes above the first seventy-six thousand, the less that exclusion is. It finally zeroes out at four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred, or something like that.
So, like you're saying, the homes over that amount.
Yeah, so homes over four hundred and thirteen thousand
Seven hundred.
Don't get the exclusion. Plus, homes over five hundred thousand get kicked up to that extra quarter of a percent for the tax capacity. So when you get to a six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar home, it starts to get to be somewhat of a significant difference in the general tax percentage you pay. Does that answer the question, or should I ramble on somewhere?
You seem to be excited about that.
Oh, I see. I live for this stuff.
And into the category.
With that, do you have any specific budget questions for Ms. Lenahan at this point?
No.
Councilwoman Heidman?
Yeah, under the general fund summary.
Yes.
The totals for total revenue.
Yes.
Does that reflect the amounts that Spuck donates back to the city?
Well, what Spuck provides back to the city are the dollars that come in for the stormwater and the sewer collections that they get from the utility bills. Now, when you're talking about donations, are you referring to like the streetlight donations?
Well, I'm talking where the amount, I'm not sure on the amount, but where it all goes out to.
Okay. The money that comes in that the city receives as far as those charges for services, okay. Now, those get brought through. Each month, the city receives a payment that flows in to the sewer fund, the stormwater fund. Those show up as the revenues there. But any of the other revenues generated by Spuck for the city flow into the contributions to the general fund.
What on average is it? Do you know what's?
It is one of the most, how do I, it's erratic. It flows and ebbs, and it's not a consistent number, so I wouldn't even want to generate an estimate. Let me give you, let me do some work on that, and I'll send you out an estimate of like a five-year run.
Okay.
Okay?
Are you talking the payment in lieu of taxes? Is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then on the next page, under general fund, annual budget, line number forty twenty-five, is pilot?
Oh.
What?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
It's that.
I was just wondering on that.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
All right.
Staff's little private airplane.
Actually, I was gonna go for that helicopter that was picking people up on one sixty-nine when it was closed.
I was just wondering.
You didn't see those drones that were on sixty minutes on demand?
You should have that, you know, in parentheses so that people know.
That's a good plan.
Not that we have a Learjet out in a parking lot or something.
That's a good plan.
But we do have Learjets too.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right. Um, if there are any other questions for staff at this point, I'll open up the audience. All right, I would like to open up at this time to folks who'd like to discuss the budget with us. Everyone will have, starting off with five minutes, we'll see how things are going. Then we'll have five minutes, and we'll take your comments, thoughts, and discuss it as we move into our major budget discussion here. So whoever'd like to start, come on up, name, address again.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jordan Olson. I live at two four nine Mount Street. I just, I kinda had a couple of questions because, you know, as we've watched this unfold over like the last year, it's kind of, it's like, here we are, here we are at the end of the year, about to make everything final. And so, after everything that's been like, all the hubbub, everything that's been thought and said, I'd like to make it very clear. I guess my question, my first one would be probably for Ms. Lenahan here. Basically, what you're saying is that.
Jordan, Mr. Olson, you'll have to address everything through us.
Okay, so my question, I guess, is for Ms. Lenahan. I'd like to hear. Basically, it's because of this four point eight percent increase in our growth as a whole, there's more for the system, there's more people for the system to take from, so therefore you have to take a little less from each person because the pool itself is bigger. Is that correct?
Correct.
So far? Okay. Now, it is indeed very fortunate that we have grown four point eight percent. That's, I mean, that's a lot, especially for annual growth, but I mean, how long can we ensure that this kind of growth is going to happen in Shakopee? I mean, doesn't this, basically, isn't, that go down from the national economy as a whole? I mean, how many dollars do people have as a whole? So, basically, I would just like to, you know, get some final confirmation. Everybody understands that it's because our city is growing that you're taking a little bit less, and as long as it's growing this way, you can take a little bit less because there's more to, you know, there's more to go around. But, in the end, I just would like to, I guess, how long can we expect this kind of growth to go on for?
Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Olson, I mean, he has a valid point. However, you'll also recall that this is the first increase that we've had in terms of the tax capacity since two thousand nine, somewhere in there. There were four or five years when Shakopee, like most other local communities, had a declining tax base. And what you do then is you adjust your annual budget to accommodate that sort of thing. So, it's something that we keep in mind. We looked at every year, and it's one of the things that you as policymakers will get recommendations from us. You set the policy, and we'll establish the budget to accommodate that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I have one more question for council. Thank you, Ms. McNeil. That was a good answer. However, another thing too, okay, we've got this growth rate, we can hire all these people on, eight-plus people, that's fine. And Dandy, I guess, my question, my next question, probably for Councilor Clay, because you're an appraiser. Do we really appraise every single property in our city to get these numbers? Do we appraise every last property? And, I mean, do we have the manpower? I mean, how does that actually work? Do we just calculate a rough value based upon the entire value of the city? Or do we go around literally checking everybody's house for a basement refinishing or a window replacement or whatnot?
It's a computer-generated or a computer modeling program that has base rates for dollars per square foot for a two-story house or a one-story house. It then subtracts money for depreciation based on its effective age, you know, how old is the house, how well has it been maintained? Properties are actually inspected once every five years, or someone is at the door, you know, knocks, and if there's somebody home, you ask if you can do a quick interior inspection or leave a tag, and hopefully they call you back and set up an appointment to come back and inspect. That's done once every five years, but estimated values are done each year, and those values are done based on the sales of property from a previous twelve-year, you know, study period prior to that. All the values are as of January second of each year. So, they are inspected once every five years unless there is a building permit taken out for, you know, basement finish or a garage or something like that. In that case, then, that year or at the end of that year, someone is going to follow up and one, make sure that the project was completed by the end of the year, or if not, how far along is it? And estimate how much did that actually contribute to the value of the house? Which, you know, you could have a forty thousand dollar porch put on the back of your house. It may only increase the market value of your house by half that.
That would basically, that is the job of a appraiser, pretty much.
And as far as your question about, you know, making sure, how can you guarantee that it's gonna go up a certain percent or each year? Where actually, this four point eight percent increase in the tax capacity was as of January second of this year, based on sales from the previous year. So, the taxes you pay in any given year are based on a market value from January second of the previous year, which is based on sales that occurred the year before that. By the time you're actually writing a check to pay your taxes, it's based on sales data from a little over two years ago. So, the assessment cycle is always gonna be kind of at the end of whatever roller coaster the market is on at the time.
And who is responsible for the assessing, and who does that work?
For the city of Shakopee, the assessing is done through the Scott County Assessing Department. Who does, all the cities in the county.
You can't guarantee the values will go up in the future, just like the housing bubble that we went through.
Yeah, you never know from one year to the next, but fortunately, we don't have to guess because we're working on data that's already been established in the past.
Right, but, yeah, okay, well, we don't have to guess about the past, but I guess all I can say is then let's continue to be hopeful for the future. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Anyone else? Mr. Saxon, welcome back up.
Mayor, councilors. Mike Saxon, nineteen oh one, Tenth Avenue. I brought my tax statement. And guess what? My property value went from a hundred and sixty-three six to a hundred and fifty-one two. That's a seven point five eight percent drop. And I must know the wrong people in town because everybody I know is experiencing the same thing. Now, down here in the bottom, it shows, look, Mike, you're paying eleven point six percent less tax. What are you complaining about? Well, my property value dropped by seven point five eight percent. And taxes are comprised of a whole lot of things. There's the county, there's the city. There's the school district.
You zoom him out, Mark or Julie, so we can see. You didn't get my hand motions there, Julie? Sorry.
Yes, it is working.
There, that'll be easier for us to see what you're talking about. Right.
Thank you. Okay, comprised of county, city, school board, metro special district, metro council, and other special tax districts. Okay. The tax percentage, the county actually went up point four nine percent. The city's percentage actually went up point nine eight percent. Ooh, the school board went down one point five eight percent. Now, if you take all these statements, I think you're gonna find the same thing. That's where all your savings are. And metro council and the other taxing districts are about blank even. So, taxes have actually increased. Now, let's take a look at a percentage of Shakopee's tax.
He's, what, Mr. Saxon, what you meant was the percentage increased?
Percentage increase.
So the rate increased is what you're saying on, based on your property value?
If you take the six ninety-four sixty-nine and divide it by the total tax, two thousand three forty twenty-five, you're gonna come up with twenty-nine point six eight percent. That's what the city got of my taxes in two thousand thirteen. Well, two thousand and fourteen, if you take six hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents and divide it by two thousand sixty-eight, you're gonna come up with thirty point six six. So, that's my first concern. Second concern is I read an article that said that the levy was sixteen million, three hundred and twelve thousand, one seventy-nine, which is the maximum law, under state law. I don't know if we've reduced that since this article was written, or if we're still at that sixteen million, three twelve, one seventy-nine, but you've taxed us as much as you can. Can't tax us anymore. Article also said there's a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budget shortfall. Even after you raised the sixteen million, three twelve, one seventy-nine, we had to come out of the general fund five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. It's a lot better than I thought because the article said we were coming out of the fund, fund two hundred and ninety-six for the administration, three hundred and thirty for EDA, two hundred and, or excuse me, seven hundred and fifty for street improvements. Looked like it was a million six, was really only about six hundred thousand dollars. But still, the big government, the big, big government, you're already at the cap, that's big government. Now you're gonna spend another six hundred thousand dollars beyond that. That's big, big government. And how do we make up the differential? Well, if you do the calculation, and I don't know if they're two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with the sales taxes factored in to the spending, if it's in that sixteen million, I'm sorry, that should be just the real estate tax levy. You should have to add that two hundred and twenty-five thousand of savings on to that. Now we're spending like sixteen point eight million dollars, and then we're five hundred thousand dollars over budget. So we're spending about another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is five percent. Well, if the property values go up five percent, we'll be fine. We'll get the five seventy-five back to the general fund, and we'll get the two hundred and twenty thousand that we saved in the sales tax. What if it doesn't go up five percent? My property says going down, not going up. And I know we've got a lot of new construction, new development in town, and we're relying on that to pump us up. And I know we need these costs in order to be able to process those new developments. But let's be careful. This is fine. It's not a million six. I'm sure you got a lot of that because that was twenty percent. In five years, your general fund would be broke. So, it's only three and a half percent. So, I think that's reasonable. Let's go for it. Let's generate some business. Let's do well, and we can not only replenish the general fund, but we can put some more money sock away for any day. Let's just hope the economy is okay. So Obamacare doesn't hurt business. I, I don't think it will. I think we're a vibrant community. I think we've got a good business opportunity. I like what the mayor's doing, so let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saxon. Any questions for Mr. Saxon? Councilwoman Whiting?
Mr. Saxon brought up a point that we've discussed at some length, and that has to do with the street improvements that we have talked about, adding more money to overcome the bubble. And I don't know if we need to talk about it anymore, but I think that's the five hundred and some thousand that. And I don't know if we need to talk about it anymore, but I think that's the five hundred and some thousand that we looked at there. That is coming out of the general fund to try and protect our streets and roads from crumbling away. Thanks for bringing that up.
Anyone else like to speak this evening? Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. All right, so council, where are we at currently? Do we like this as it is right now? Are there any changes that we'd like to make? I'll go down the line again real quick. We'll start on the other side this time and just see, is there any, are there any major changes that we want to see from what's been presented from staff? And see where we want to go to make this work for two thousand and fourteen. So Councilor Heitzman?
Just on the adding of the positions, I don't agree with the management intern and the natural resources coordinator. I think we could do without both of those. And everything else in there is fine. And otherwise, the management intern, one of the duties was to help change over the refuse and recycling provider. I was under the assumption that wasn't going to cost the city anything, and we're already hiring somebody to oversee it. So how many people are we going to hire to over, to watch the trashcans, maintain them and that? That's, that could start a whole nother, open up a whole nother door.
Let's, let's wait to discuss things until we get everything on the table. Does that work?
Yep.
Councilor Clay? Do you like it as presented?
So far.
Okay. Councilor Layman?
Um, there's a whole lot I don't like about it.
Okay, let's get it on the table.
Normally, the debt levy that we're levying separate from the general levy was part of the general levy. I feel like we're using it to go above the three percent threshold that the state has imposed on us. I disagree with a lot of the positions that we've hired and some of that are on the table to hire. For thirteen, fourteen positions in the last twelve months, I think is substantial. Disagree with that. I totally agree with Mr. Saxon's point. That's happening to a lot of properties, including my own. I'm still paying about what I paid on the house when it was valued almost two hundred thousand, and it's substantially valued less. So yes, the dollar amount hasn't changed a whole lot, but the value of the property has substantially, over the years, come down. When the population you represent has to tighten its belt, I feel that we should be doing the same. And I don't think we're doing that. It's my satisfaction anyway.
Okay. Councilor Whiting?
Well, I think we're moving in the right direction with the hiring staff that has been let go in the past and now being brought back on to handle some of the higher traffic we have in all the different departments. We're planning ahead for future retirements. We're working on the debt levy that the voters have voted for to be levied against them. I'm happy to see that. Some of the positions, I can understand the questions, but when you come down to it, it's the smaller positions that don't add up to much that are going to affect us and will only help us in the office here. So I'm happy with what we have.
All right, very good. I am very much in the same boat as Councilor Whiting. The only thing that I'd like to see is what would be a... Do we have any changes to, Ms. Lanahan, do we have any changes to the, what the county has given us? We're at four point eight percent tax-based growth for next year. Have we have any revised numbers? Because at one time you said you thought it was going to be larger or?
At this point, I was waiting to see what was going to happen with the fiscal disparities and see what that did to the calculation with the tax rate. We do not have those yet. So I would say conservatively, let's go with four point eight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Clay?
Quick question. With these staff additions that we're proposing here, does that bring us back to our staffing level from four, five, six years ago? Question for Chris, our HR expert.
I thought you might ask this question. I've got a chart for you.
Chart? Yes!
It's crooked chart.
Julie had colored charts, sorry.
So this shows you our, basically our full-time employees. The vast majority of these are full-time employees. You'll see currently in two thousand and thirteen, we have a hundred and thirty-three point nine FTEs. A hundred and thirty-one of those are actual full-time employees. And the other two point nine are five individuals that work some magnitude of part-time. So this is our main full-time staff. This staff is supplemented by part-time and seasonal staff primarily in parks and recreation and somewhat in public works as well as our paid-on call fire department. But you can see the growth in positions and the decline in positions during the economic downturn. So we are not back to where we were when the recession started, I would say.
Even with, when we add the, if we add those other positions, we'll be closer, right?
We would get closer with the proposed positions for two thousand and fourteen.
But not quite there.
Do you have any, I know this is awful to ask right now, but per capita at all?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. Positions per capita?
Employees per capita.
No, per capita. Population.
We can certainly get that for you, but I don't have it available tonight.
Councilor Layman?
I guess what my attention goes to is it took four years to reduce eight positions, and it took one year to increase eight positions.
Were we in a race for the bottom or?
Well, no, it's shock therapy, I guess.
Well, if you go back to two thousand and six, it took one year to go up six or seven positions.
And we have a significantly larger population now than we had in two thousand and six. I mean, we've added...
But two thousand and eight was when the economy pretty much tanked.
Right.
So before that, we ramped up because of the growth that Shakopee saw, which was pretty substantial.
Right.
Then we leveled out. It tanked. We tanked with it, and now we're shooting back up.
Well, I don't, I think tank with it is hard to say because when you're having a lot less development, you need a lot less people to handle that development. And now we have a lot of development happening. We need more people to handle the development. Is that not correct?
That's not comparable to what we saw in the past.
Explain how.
In the past, I, we were seeing twelve hundred units a year. As normal, every year, year after year.
Mm-hmm.
We're not seeing that right now.
Not right now. You're right. Councilor Heitzman?
Chris, do you have a chart like this for part-time employees?
I do not. Our part-time employees, like I said, are primarily in the Parks and Recreation Department, filling jobs such as service desk attendant at the community center, lifeguard, ice skating instructors. And they're a fairly mobile population. They come and go quickly. A lot of them work multiple jobs for us. And so it's really hard for me to say how many FTEs we have. I can tell you, we issue a W-two for every single individual human being that we have cut a paycheck to in that year. So sometimes, you know, one person filled the job from January to June, and then it was empty for a month and another person filled it. But our W-twos hover right around three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty-five. So there's another two hundred and fifty people roughly on top of these numbers that draw a paycheck from the city at some point. Like I said, that includes yourselves, members of the planning commission who are paid, paid-on-call firefighters, seasonal snowplow drivers, part-time employees in parks and rec. They are a large number. But a lot of them, it's not uncommon for us to cut paychecks for six hours for the two-week pay period. You know, so some of them are working a very small number of hours.
All right. Any further questions on these? So now we have a couple of items to discuss that have been brought up so far. The positions, the management intern, natural resources intern. And then just Councilor Layman want to discuss positions in general. I, myself, overall, I'm very happy with the positions there. I think that each of them are necessary and needed to continue to maintain our growth and help where we're going. And once we are through that, then we don't need the positions in the same capacity anymore. So things would adjust at that point, once we would hit growth, but that's not for a long time. So are there... How do we want to do this? Forget how we did it last year. Did we do, put a little motion out there for, do we want to reduce the number of positions? Or from the presented or what? Councilor Layman, how would you like to handle it?
Well, I think during the course of the events, we've had our discussions and our disagreements. Just move forward with what's on the table and let the votes fall into the ball. I mean, my position hasn't changed any, even though I lost them fights over the course of this year. That's fine. That's the way it works. And we can pass this whether I support it or not. I'm just not going to support something that I inside don't support, so.
Right, but I guess I would also hope that...
What's done is done.
Right, and if there are things that you think could make this better, that we could all agree to, now is the time to... That we could all agree to, now is the time to do that.
Pretty late in the process for that.
But I also hope that you wouldn't vote against a budget simply for one or two items. It's an overall package. And if you're going to cherry pick a couple of things that you don't like out of a multimillion-dollar budget and vote no against it, that way, then I think that's also not the way we'd want to go. But that's obviously your choice. So is there any one that would like to make changes to the way the budget has been presented?
Well, we can take out the interns.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Thompson?
From experience, the best way to do that is to get a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I would do the budget resolution first and get a motion on the floor to adopt resolution seventy-three ninety. Get that seconded, and then if there's amendments to it, we can process the amendments. But that's usually the fast, the most efficient way to get that done.
Thank you, sir. So seventy-three ninety is the best one to start with?
The budget, yes.
All right, we have a motion for seventy-three ninety. Councilor Whiting?
I'd like a motion to approve resolution seventy-three ninety, a resolution adopting the two thousand and fourteen budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Clay, discussion. This is the general budget out of any amendments that we would like to make to the motion. Discussion then. All right, seeing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilors Heitzman and Layman in dissent. Councilor Whiting?
Offer resolution seventy-three eighty-nine, a resolution setting the two thousand and thirteen tax levy collectible in two thousand and fourteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Set by Councilor Clay, discussion. All right, seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I guess I was going to vote for that one, but...
Oh, sorry, you're not?
Yeah, I'll vote for that.
Okay. So that was seventy-three eighty-nine. We have five ayes, zero nays. I'm correct there? All right. Thank you, seventy-three ninety-one. Councilor Layman?
Seventy-three, offer resolution seventy-three ninety-one cancelling debt service levies for two thousand and fourteen.
Well, that's the fun one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, Councilor Heitzman, any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we have a two thousand and fourteen budget. Thank you very much. Councilor Layman?
Five-minute recess.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for five-minute recess. Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess. All right, we reconvene, Shakopee City Council meeting with item number six A, sorry, seven A, twenty-thirteen currency exchange licenses. Counsel Lehman.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seven, Counsel Heitzman, we'll give it to. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in public hearing. Ms. Linnahan.
I'm back again. Before you this evening, the action requested is to approve two special, uh, separate resolutions, number seven-three-eight-zero, which issues a license to the, I have to read the proper name here, DRM LLC of Shakopee, and resolution seven-three-eight-eight, which, uh, authorizes the Madison Financial Companies. This is an action that was, uh, postponed at the last meeting, so the hearing is continued for this evening. We've actually, uh, put each separate currency exchange license in front of you as a separate resolution, again, first one being Excel Pawn, the second one being Money Exchange. These are currency exchange license. The council is asked to concur with the action of the state to grant these licenses. This is not approving a currency exchange license. This is not their pawn shop license. That will come to you later in December. This is simply to concur with the action that the state has forwarded to us, ask council to bring forward as a concurrence, not an approval, and that is before you this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Linnahan? Counsel Whitey.
Uh, repercussions for denial? On what basis, on what basis any action we can even take?
Would the attorney care to comment on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Counsel, uh, statute, you'd have to come up with a basis for not concurring, I guess that's what I'd say.
And even if we didn't concur, it wouldn't matter, correct?
Uh, it's, it's possible it would matter.
Oh.
Well, if you don't do anything, it, by default, they approve it.
Right, got it. Counsel Lehman.
But if we deny it, we'd have to have a basis, and if we have a solid basis, then it, it could be denied, but we don't have a basis.
Counsel Whitey.
I'll adopt, uh, motion to adj- not.
Uh, wait, we're public hearing.
A public hearing, I'm sorry.
Do we have, uh?
Want to speak, yes, all right.
Whose meeting is this?
Ms. Adams.
Ours.
Anyone like to speak on this item that's in the audience today? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Counsel Clay.
Close the public hearing.
Counsel Lehman.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Counsel Clay.
Offer resolution seventy-three eighty.
Do we have a second? Counsel Lehman.
I'll second it with a friendly amendment.
And that is?
To add seventy-three eighty-eight. Make it one motion to do two.
All right, Counsel Clay, you agree?
Sure, why not?
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously for seventy-three eighty and seventy-three eighty-eight. Thank you. Item number eight, business review from consent agenda, four F four. Counsel Lehman.
Uh, Mayor, I asked us to be off consent agenda so that we can have a discussion on some other possibilities. Let me find my paperwork here. It's probably in the bottom of the stack because it's out of order because I took it off consent because of that.
You previously knew where it was going to be.
The questions that I have, actually, I was contacted by one of the new- newly council elect individuals also, but some of the issues I had was, uh, the T-twelve lamps are not manufactured, but they still are available, and then the bigger question I had, um, if we went to a LED light setup, how much more of a savings would that be and what kind of rebates are available if we did that through Spuck? Um, and then what possibly would be the additional cost to do that? And what kind of life expectancy and payback would we get out of that compared to the, was it T-eights?
T-twelves.
Whatever they're recommending to replace these with now, and, uh, yeah, T-eights. And what was the other one? And then what would be the additional cost of the LED over the T-eight? Cause I, my concern is, in a couple of years, they're probably going to outlaw T-eights too, or stop manufacturing them or whatever. So them are some of the issues I had, and then is this pressing that this has to be done right away, or is this something that we can look at and get some of these answers to first?
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. That's a long list of questions. I'll tackle ones I can remember, and you'll have to remind me of what I.
We're both in trouble if that's the case.
We started this project by hiring an electrical engineer to, um, help us with the process and to draw up specifications and plans so that we can ensure we were getting apples-to-apples quotes. City is contacted fairly regularly by salespersons wanting to convince us to switch our lighting to LED. Um, we had been contacted by several related to this project, um, and we decided we needed some professional help and expertise in wading through the options. So the first step in working with David Hiersman, our consultant from M and E Engineering, which is a consulting engineering firm out of Eagan, was the conversation of what should we replace the lights with? Should we go to LED? Or should we switch from the T-twelves to some more efficient form of fluorescent lighting, such as the T-eights? And after visiting with David, um, and applying our own understanding of the situation as well, the consensus was that the LED technology for this kind of application is not there yet. As I've been educated in the process, it goes something like this. The savings from doing LEDs generally comes from the le- um, reduced amount of maintenance. They last a long, long, long time, and the bulbs don't have to be changed as frequently as they do for a fluorescent bulb. Which if you are a big box retailer and you have a huge parking lot and you have to hire a contractor to come in and change your light bulbs, there's a big savings to only having to hire that contractor once every fifteen or twenty years, rather than having to hire that contractor every three years, let's say. And that's where a big savings comes in, to doing exterior LED lights. This is, and ninety-five percent of this project is interior lighting. There are maybe ten or twelve exterior lights on the outside of the building above the doors that are included. If we had gone with LED lighting in a project like this, um, our consultant tells us we could expect the cost of the fixtures, the upfront cost of the lights themselves, to be up to four times as much as the cost of you're seeing in front of you. And our savings would be virtually nonexistent. It's because we don't have those costs of major relamping. Our in-house staff changes them as they go out periodically. Um, so we would not see that direct savings of not having to hire a contractor to change the bulbs. And additionally, the LEDs that they use for downward interior lighting are treated with a special, almost like a paint, as I understand it. And the treatment that goes on that is necessary to get the light color and quality that you want for an interior setting where people are going to be working. And that reduces the energy efficiency of the LEDs, so we end up with the same electrical bill that we would have going with these T-eights. So we would spend significantly more on the fixtures up front and not see a savings on our electrical bill. Um, that is the direction and the education we received from the electrical engineer we hired. I also spoke, um, with the representative of Choice Electric, the company that we are recommending to do the project, and he concurred that LED technology is not there yet for a downward interior lighting project. Um, it makes for a good headline and some good PR. LEDs are, you know, you hear a lot about them in the news, and for some applications, you know, they're a really good use, but all signs and information we've collected on this project is that they are not the appropriate use for this kind of installation at this time. That leads to the question of, do we have to do something at this time? Um, technically, no, there's no pressing deadline. Um, as noted, they no longer manufacture, um, T-twelve light bulbs. We bought out, um, everything our regular supplier has, um, for T-twelve bulbs, um, at the end of last year, so that we would have a full supply of them. Um, and we are planning to save the bulbs that we take out of this project because we have T-twelve lamps in Fire Station Number One that we're hoping to keep going for several more years by stockpiling what we can of T-twelves. I would argue that the city sets aside money in the building fund so that we don't wait till the last possible moment to make improvements until we've shopped every single lighting supplier in the metro area, and then we absolutely have to change them urgently. They no longer manufacture them. The U.S. Department of Energy, you know, made that regulation so that people would stop using them. Um, this is a planned improvement to the building at this point, um, so I would argue that now is the time to go forward. We can expect to see, um, somewhere between twenty and thirty percent savings on our overall electric bill as a result of this improvement, so we would start seeing that reduction in our electrical bill in twenty-fourteen if we proceed with this project now. Is there a great fantastic return on investment where that energy savings pays off the cost of the project in, you know, a relatively short number of years? No, there isn't. It's, it would take about fifteen or sixteen years for the energy savings to be a full payoff. We're not doing this entirely out of an energy savings, you know, goal. We're not, we're replacing them because they're obsolete fixtures that we're concerned about our ability to maintain on an ongoing basis, and unless the city has plans to stop utilizing that building anytime soon, Facilities Division feels an obligation to make sure that we have working lights for the employees that work in that building, so.
That, I think that hit most of your questions, no?
Yeah, oh, one more. Do we, does M and E Engineering know when the LEDs might be viable for this type of application?
He, um, said that probably the most reasonable estimate was that it could be ten years out. If the economy improves significantly and the demand continues to increase, that could move up shorter, and you could see this ki- LED, um, technology being ripe for this kind of application sooner than that. If we fall back into another recession, you could see it pushed out further, so. Kind of demand depends on supply and demand, um, but, um, I know, um, Councilmember-elect Lewis had indicated to me that he felt three or four years. Um, our engineer did not concur with that opinion. He thinks it will be longer that we would be waiting for a viable alternative.
All right, um, I just want to ask, Counsel, future Councilmember Lewis, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this, or you?
Hi, my name's Mike Lewis, nine thirteen Atwood. Um, I've got a lot of figures and numbers here. Chris is right on most everything she said. I won't dispute much of what she says. We're talking a twenty-one thousand dollar energy cost to light that building per year. Your project is sixty-eight thousand five hundred. Um, with the changeover to T-eights, you're looking at saving about seven thousand dollars a year. Um, if you went to LEDs, they're eighty percent efficient. I know they're not there yet. They're not viable. What I'm looking to propose is to push this project back a couple of years, see if LEDs catch up. Um, the T-eights, um, already have an end date for manufacture for the seven-hundred series. The eight-hundred series is still available. They are talking about an end date for those that's going to be in the near future. The T, the eight-hundred series, um, it uses a rare earth element that China controls eighty to ninety percent of. So we're going to be relying on them to be able to get our lighting if we, uh, stay with the fluorescents. If you go with the LEDs, um, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project cost, which would be over two times what this project cost is, you would still pay it back in the same amount of time as this project would be paid back. It would be actually a little less. It'd be, uh, nine years to nine point nine years. The LEDs, uh, make a financial, um, they're, they're far superior when they become viable. They're better from a green aspect. There's no mercury in them. The T-eights still have mercury like the T-twelves do. They, you know, Chris said they bought out their, their supplier. I checked the local supplier. They have fifteen hundred in stock. I don't know what our usage is on that building, but fifteen hundred, I think, would carry a quite a few years. I don't know the number of bulbs in the building, but, you know, I'm sure they could research that. I don't know that this needs to be decided tonight. You know, I think a little more research might help a lot. Um, Spuck has no money right now for rebates, so we'd get nothing out of Spuck right now. They're out of money for the year. Um, next year's a possibility. They wouldn't guarantee anything. Um, LEDs hold a greater rebate value, um, as you've seen with the re-lighting of the streets with the LEDs. Spuck came up with a larger portion, um, because of the lower usage. Their, their demand is quite a bit lower. I think we need to do a little more research, and, um, you know, staff can do that. Um, I don't know that we, you know, need engineer to, to do it, but, you know, there's different alternatives out there. I talked to an en- uh, electrical contractor. He said there is another lighting alternative out there. It's still in its infancy like LEDs is, are. Um, they're expensive, but they show a lot of promise, so, you know, if we could bounce this back a couple of years, you know, we, we would be losing, uh, if we do the project, we save seven thousand dollars a year. If we wait four years, we're only going to lose seven thousand dollars over what we would be spending, because we wouldn't do it.
We can't hold all the projects off.
No, no, I'm just saying if we could, you know, research it more.
Right.
Get a little better idea. We don't need to do it immediately, but a couple of years wouldn't hurt us to, uh, sit on these, and, you know, I don't know what they bought out for T-twelves, you know, and what's, what's the amount of lighting we've got in storage right now? You know, and could we possibly do a partial retrofit? Do the main parts of the building that staff uses? All the storage areas, they're very seldomly used. They're talking about putting some timers on the, or some, uh, other kind of motion sensors on the lighting. They could put those on the T-twelves and still save some money. They'll be used, whatever lighting is put in those areas in the future. LEDs will use those, T-twelves, T-eights, they all use, can use the same thing. Um, from what I found out about the LEDs, it's not the bulb that's the problem. It's the driver that reduces the voltage to the bulb. They're having a huge failure rate on those.
All right.
I guess huge might be a large word, but, um, that's where the problem lies, so I would just suggest backing off, doing a little more research.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel Lehman.
Mayor, I don't want to be the first one to try out an indoor LED either. I just saw somebody else. I just want somebody else tries them out at their expense and then let me know how they work before I try them.
Right.
So I'm not too quick to jump on a LED bandwagon, um, I, but I don't know enough about it either, so I won't. Didn't know that they weren't usable for this type of use because of the coatings and all that stuff, so. Not too gung ho to try something that's never been tried.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Yeah, from my research, uh, LED isn't there yet. Uh, I think it's coming, but it's not, uh, there. I would caution on the T eights, though, there are some ballasts out there that are of concern, that have, uh, uh, some recalls and some lawsuits and things like that. So I would caution a little research on that end, but I think we need to, uh, move forward with, uh, getting this relamped.
Councilman Clay?
Yesterday, at the Utility Commission's, uh, meeting, they did approve continuing the, uh, non-residential lighting retrofit for these T twelve and T eight lights, uh, for next year, so that rebate would be available to us next year.
To go away from T eight lights?
Away from T twelve.
No, to away from the T twelve to the, to replacing the old T twelve light, lamps. They have a, a rebate program for that, that they've voted to fund again next year, so.
Okay. Councilman Lehman?
If, uh, if we approve this now, are, are we not eligible for next year's rebate?
Ms. Wilson?
Um, I talked with, um, Choice Electric about that yesterday, and we kinda mutually agreed that we would get our ducks in a row and our plans in place and hold off on creating any invoices or actually doing the work until the week of January sixth, which would put us solidly in, um, Spuck's window for 2014 rebates. Cause like I said, there isn't that much urgency that we start next week. At this point, we will start the week of January sixth and, um, just eliminate any concern that we might have a rebate qualification problem.
Perfect. All right, any other questions? Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Whiting?
I think I motion to accept the price quote from Choice Electric for relighting the engineering building located at five hundred Gorman Street and authorize the expenditure in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the project from the general government building fund.
Do we have a second?
Second, Matt.
Councilwoman Heidman, any discussion? Councilman Lehman?
Do we have to, uh, have, Chris, when you talk to M and E, make sure that the, uh, what'd you call them? The T eight, uh?
Ballast.
Ballast thing? Aren't the recalled ones or the questionable ones or whatever?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Councilman Clay in, uh, very emotional dissent. Move on to, uh, item number nine, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Entertained motion recess. Councilman Lehman?
Motion recess to EDA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same with Councilwoman Heidman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are in recess. President Whiting?
Good evening, and we'll call to order the December third, two thousand thirteen meeting of the Shocapi Economic Development Authority. Uh, Ms. Weckman, please make note of the role.
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections? Mr. Lehman?
I approve the agenda.
Second.
Mo- motion and second on the floor, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is the consent agenda, which includes the EDA minutes from November nineteenth and the EDA bill list. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have no other business tonight. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. Chair, the, in the past, I've asked that, uh, these charges kinda tell us what they're for. I know it says attorney, but that really doesn't put it where they project.
We'll provide a better description.
Bejaboo.
I've heard that.
I have too.
All right, well. All right, the, anything else? Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn till Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand thirteen at seven PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, seconded by Mr. Clay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
All right, we reconvene the Shocapi City Council meeting and move on to item number eleven A one, zoning text amendment, breweries, brew pubs, tap rooms, tasting rooms, distilleries, and wineries, ordinance number eight seventy-seven.
Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. As you know from the report, that's in your packet, both you and city staff over the course of the past year or so have received a number of inquiries from individuals wanting to start a brew pub or brewery within the city of Shocapi. And indeed, previously, when Surly was actually out looking for a location, I prepared a proposal for us for them to locate in, uh, Ryan's Dean Lake. That property, of course, is a business park area, and so would have allowed the processing facility with some attendant tasting. So we started at a staff level researching both the state statute, as well as those few communities who have made changes to their ordinances to accommodate those kinds of businesses. What you have in front of you is the distillation of that effort. If you want me to go through the details, I'm happy to, but let me simply say that we've adopted a number of the definitions that are in state statute that are relevant, relevant to the subject of breweries, brew pubs, and distilleries, as well as some others that were not a part of the statute. Um, we do in a couple of places refer to that statute because there is the potential for change in quantities that could be brewed, for example, in brew pubs. Basically, what we've done in the ordinance is to propose those definitions become a part of the ordinance, and you can see some of those in the resolution number eight seventy-seven. And then we go through each of the sections related to the relevant zoning districts, including neighborhood commercial, community commercial, central business district, or B, B three, um, missing someone, uh, B one highway business, the industrial zoning classifications, including business park and natural resources, and list those uses based on the nature of that district, which are permitted of right. In other words, they don't require a public hearing, and those that would require a conditional use permit. So it would go through the Board of Adjustment to review the conditions related to each specific proposal. There's, highlighted in your report, and I'll just do it, um, for the audience here tonight, uh, one or two, there are one or two changes. I think the most significant one is contained on that page of the resolution that deals with section eleven point four zero, the central business district, or B three zone. When the proposed language was in front of the Planning Commission, we didn't have language that referred to tap rooms or tasting rooms in connection with micro distilleries and small breweries. And as we talked about that after the Planning Commission recommendation, given the character of that downtown district, we thought it might be a good idea to have that retail experience available for those kinds of facilities, rather than having purely processing facilities located in the downtown. So we've made that change, and I've highlighted it here. I don't believe, given the way that we provided the public hearing notice, that that materially affects the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Um, in addition, as you know, in our ordinance for conditional use permits, we identify a number of essentially advisory standards for those uses. The Board of Adjustment or the City Council, if it comes to the City Council, can vary those conditions based on the individual circumstances of an application, but we like to provide some basis for the kinds of things that we want to see addressed in the conditional use permit. So that, too, is a part of this draft ordinance in front of you this evening. Um, and I think that's enough for now unless you have specific questions, so I'm open to your questions.
Councilman Lehman?
I read this whole thing, and I guess the only question I have really is, who oversees the operations? I'm, you know, like a restaurant, the state comes in and checks the finalness and the preparation and temperatures and stuff? I mean, is there?
Well, for uses like brew pubs, which operate like a restaurant, as well as, um, brewing beer on premises, those functions would either take place at the state level or at the county level. As you know, the city does not have environmental or food service inspection or ordinances. So that's where that takes place. In terms of those uses that require a conditional use permit, the CUP is overseen by city staff to make sure they comply with whatever conditions attached to that conditional use permit.
But I didn't see nothing in here that says that that oversight has to happen.
No, but that's implied, that they would have to comply with all applicable state, county, and city regulations. And where we get particularly concerned is where we've said that a use is a conditional use, we want to impose specific conditions that will make it more harmonious with uses that may surround it.
Does the state actually require some kind of inspection process or what? What I'm getting at is, years ago, if you drank the, made the moonshine wrong and drank it, you might go blind or something. How does, how do we make sure that doesn't happen?
Yeah, and in my family, it was bathtub wine, and we're lucky no one was blind that I know of. Um, I believe that the statute, and, and perhaps the city attorney has more background than I, um, actually does address, um, those requirements for licensing that are not picked up by the community. And we're not proposing to specifically license these operations at the city level because we don't have either the regulations or the staffing to address that.
Did Mr. Thompson have anything to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, the, for example, brew, brew, uh, breweries and distilleries have to get licensed by the state, so, uh, and Mr. Leek's correct. We have general conditional use permit requirements that all CUPs have to meet, so we do have an enforcement from that end if something goes wrong with respect to the use.
All right, Councilwoman Heidman?
Because they're actually producing a consumable, I think the Department of Agriculture would be in on it, too. They'd be coming in and doing their.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Or yearly inspections on it and that, so we wouldn't be involved in anything.
Now, what we have done in, in those years where we've required, for example, a conditional use permit for restaurants that served alcohol or entertainment, we no longer require a CUP for that. But often that resolution will include a condition that says, "We'll comply with all applicable state and county regulations related to the operation as well," which ties them to any changes that might occur as well.
Any other questions?
But there's a couple, there's a couple of zoning classifications that they're not required to have a conditional use permit?
Well, let me just walk through that, because what we're really saying is that there are some of those uses that would be permitted without a conditional use permit. So neighborhood commercial, for example, a permitted use is brew pubs, and you see from the definition that a brew pub is an establishment that operates like a restaurant, but also happens to brew a limited amount of beer per year. So our thought was that that, that doesn't per se require a conditional use permit any more than another restaurant that might serve alcohol. Um, however, in that zoning district, farm wineries, which can produce up to fifty thousand gallons of wine per year, or micro distilleries with tasting rooms, or small breweries with tap rooms, sorry, um, would be conditional use permits. And part of the reason is that they would produce greater quantities of alcoholic beverage in connection with those defined uses, and that continues throughout each zoning district. So, um, I'll just run through some more of them briefly so the audience can see as well. So for, let me zoom this out so we can see a little bit more of it. Whoa, too much. Okay. So we started with neighborhood commercial, and then we go to highway business. And in the highway business zone, again, brew pubs are permitted, those other uses are conditional uses. In community commercial, similarly, brew pubs are permitted, those other uses require a CUP. Same thing in the central business district, um, and in major recreation, which is also a commercial district, generally speaking, in Shocapi zoning code scheme. Uh, then we get to light industry zone, where permitted uses include breweries, distilleries, and wineries. And again, the light industrial zone is for a variety of industrial uses, including processing. And these uses are basically processing uses. For other kinds of light industry zone uses, we allow some retail sales, um, as a portion of it, so allowing them to operate some tasting would be a part of, um, of that as well. However, uh, tap rooms and wine distillery tasting rooms would be conditional use permits, and our thought there is because they are more retail in character, less processing in character, and that continues through the industrial zones.
As we're going through that, can you go down to the, uh, explain to me that no later than ten PM for the outdoor seating and the, uh?
Yeah, I can, um.
Can you just explain why that is, please?
Yep, the reason that we did that, there are some things that we did not address because they typically get addressed by the City Council or by the city with the wine or beer license or liquor license that's issued by the city. However, a number of these uses, if they're permitted, would be adjacent to residential areas. The one example we had years ago was a restaurant that did do brewing up by the Cub Foods, immediately adjacent to a residential subdivision. There was a berm and some trees, but the concern was for noise from the outdoor areas particularly. So we took a stab at saying for the outdoor seating areas, there should be a limitation, largely because many of the zoning districts that we're talking about here are gonna end up being adjacent to residential districts.
So does that, so like if, uh, someone wanted a tap room downtown?
Mm-hmm.
That means that no outdoor later than ten PM?
That is what it would mean. Um, if it is, however, a use that requires a conditional use permit, so again, remember downtown, brew pubs are permitted, the others would require a conditional use permit, the Board of Adjustment does have the authority to vary that limitation within the CUP.
Based on, based on impacts to the surrounding property?
Based on the individual property, the impacts on surrounding properties. So that's something they have some flexibility with.
Got it, thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Leek.
Thank you.
Anyone, uh, like to put a motion forward for this?
I'll drink to that. I don't drink, um.
Councilman Lehman?
Alaf ordinance eight seventy-seventh, eight seventy-seven amending the zoning code relating to breweries, brew pubs, tap rooms, tasting rooms, wineries, distilleries, moonshining, and move its adoption.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Clay. Um, any further discussion? Besides the fact that I'm very excited that this, uh, is going through, and thank you for the work on pulling this forward, I really appreciate it. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number eleven A two, request of Patrick Link for return of street and utility easement vacation fee.
Thank you, members of the council and members of the audience. Just briefly, as you know, when you approve the vacation related to South Park View first edition, which will be replanted as South Park View fifth edition and recorded, um, Mr. Patrick Link requested that you consider returning some or all of the vacation fee of nine hundred dollars. Um, in the staff report, I have not recommended to you that you either do that or not do that. It's fair to say that over the course of the year, certainly, city staff and the city attorney have expended more than that fee in this case. But the equities that I think Mr. Link is talking about relate to the fact that in the early nineteen nineties, when we had in-house counsel, there were, I believe, three separate attempts to get that vacation done. It was rebuffed by the county. Unfortunately, I don't have records available that tell me, tells me why they wouldn't accept it. We also don't have specific records of what the charges were in, I think, ninety-three, ninety-four, which was the timeframe for the previous action. So you may wish to consider his request based on those equities. I have no specific recommendation for you, but if you've got questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I kinda went around with Mr. Leek on this earlier before the meeting, and, and I just wanna make sure I understand this completely. The, uh, resident, Mr. Link, came in back in ninety-two, ninety-three, somewhere in there?
I forget the exact initial application for vacation.
Mr. Link, if you're gonna talk, would you please come up to the microphone? Mr. Link, if you're gonna talk, could you please come up to the microphone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. In ninety-four, my dad had the property and when the Verlin Drive came through, they failed to vacate the thirteenth avenue that went through. Maybe I misunderstood, I guess I felt that was the city's issue to have that vacation done. And maybe the Scott County did not record it, for what reason, I don't know. But at this point, in developing the property, we've came across a lot of expense with the engineer that I've hired and the abstract company and fees from the city attorney also in trying to get this resolved. I, I guess, if some of the fee could be reimbursed, it would be greatly appreciated. I just felt that it should have been done a long time ago. And, and when we received final plat approval in oh-five, you know, why wasn't this brought up then? You know, so basically, that's the issue, I guess.
Here's what I'm getting at. If you came to my shop and asked me to put a battery in your car and I charged you for a battery and you drove home and found out that battery wasn't in the car, you'd come back and say, "Where's my battery?" So I'm trying to make sure this is the same case. Somebody in your family, at some point, paid to have this service performed, is that correct? Or you don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. Because if, 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 if that's not the case, you're trying to develop the property, this needs to take place, then you should file an application to have this done, which you're doing now.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilor, based on my review of this and the previous resolution, there were at least one, one previous street vacation application submitted and presumably a fee paid for. It never got recorded. And it had to do, it was not a simple one, and it had to do with the legal descriptions. So it had to be redone. So they did submit a street vacation, there was a fee paid. It couldn't get accomplished and it just got discovered and now, so, and it wasn't simple this time around either, so.
And members of the council, maybe I can address that in, in a little bit more detail and I'm working from recollection. But I believe there was at least one follow-up resolution by the city council at that time. So there was an initial request to vacate. The city council passed a resolution vacating what was requested to be vacated, attempted to record it. It was not recordable according to the county, as Mr. Thompson says, because of legal description issues. And I will share that over my years here in Scott County, over time, we've had a number of those kinds of issues. And it's only fairly recently that the county has become more workable on those kinds of issues. When it was discovered that was not recordable, there was a second attempt through a resolution by the city council to affect that vacation and get it recorded. It too was not recorded. I'm not sure why, because I don't have access to whoever at the counter said, "Here, take it back, we're not gonna record it." And the reason it wasn't discovered at the plating of South Park View fifth edition a few years ago, and it was discovered this year, is because the title opinion work was done this year. It had not been previously done. As you know, there were extensions granted for South Park View fifth edition because they weren't ready to develop it. So that's the reason why it took from about two thousand six until now to discover those circumstances. And unfortunately, it is just not a simple situation. But, and I can't tell you why the city attorney, we had in-house counsel at that time, didn't do anything further, but it still never got recorded. So we're gonna try and rectify that so that his expenditure will lead to some residential lots, which the city dearly needs right now.
Councilor Whiting.
If the legal description wasn't correct, is that the city's issue or is that the builder's issue or the county's issue?
It probably was not a question of the legal description being correct. And I'm going out on a limb here because I haven't reviewed them in detail. But the county often, over the years, would not accept legal descriptions if the recorder's office or the staff at the recorder's office deemed them to be too complex. If they thought they were too long, they would not record an action. That may have been the case here, but I don't know without access to staff at that time.
Councilor Lehman.
I don't think a guy should have to pay twice for the same thing and still not get what he paid for. So I, I don't have, yeah, what, I don't have a problem with giving this guy some of his money back.
Split it.
Sure.
Councilor Clay?
My problem is that if they had developed the parcel twenty years ago when they had approval to develop it, this would have been forced to have been taken care of, you know, nineteen, twenty years ago. I'm thinking, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, these expenses today are resulting because we've been sitting on this undeveloped plan of land for twenty years, which is not the city's fault.
Councilor Lehman.
I would argue the original application was ninety-four. The city, multiple times after that, oh-four and oh-five, tried to get it done and done and done, still couldn't get it done. So there's.
County should pay for it.
Absolutely, that's why I say we split it, we go after the county for the other half. So it's not like they sat on it because eleven years later, the city tried again to do it and still couldn't get it done. So here we are, another almost ten years again later, trying again. I, I think we should pay half and walk it up, have staff walk it up there and stand there until it's completed.
Has this, this has been currently paid and would need to be a refund? Or is this just a different invoicing?
That's correct, it would be a refund.
Okay, does anyone have a motion for what we wanna do? Councilor Lehman?
Make a motion to refund fifty percent of actual costs by the applicant.
Of application fee?
Of the application fee on this recent application.
And just to note for the record, the application fee was nine hundred dollars, so that would be four hundred and fifty dollars.
Four hundred and fifty, yep.
I'll second that with a friendly amendment.
Yes, sir.
That in, in so doing, no city staff time will be spent getting this done. It would be totally up to the, to Mr. Link to effect whatever he can get done with the county. But our hands are, are clean of this now.
No, I don't accept that. The reason I don't accept that, Mayor, is because obviously in two thousand four or five, we tried numerous times to send it back, couldn't get it done. And if government, the government can't function, citizen, the government ain't gonna function. So I'm sure it's in everybody's interest that it gets done and it gets done properly and soon, not another ten years down the road.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, still needs a second.
I'll second it.
Councilor Heidman? Seconds the motion, do we have any further discussion? Councilor Whiting.
Just a concern that this doesn't set any precedence and doesn't come back again, Mr. Link. Further, uh?
Mr. Whiting, the city attorney can certainly address you on this, but I think it's fair to say that the facts of this circumstance are significantly unique so that you're unlikely to find exactly the same circumstances requiring that this be a precedent.
I agree. Mr. Thompson's nodding, he concurs. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we move on now to, we are on eleven D one, review of updated city job descriptions. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, give me just a minute here.
I was gonna say, Councilor Clay, a song, please? You've only got one more meeting after this to do that.
Fly me to the moon and let me dance upon the stars.
Now, if Councilor Heidman will get up and dance?
I don't.
I'm leaving if you don't.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The item I have before you tonight is a major project that we have been working on in the H R division in recent months. And that is a citywide updating of written job descriptions and the corresponding pay plan. We are doing this for a variety of reasons, but the urgency is created by a need to stay in compliance with the state's pay equity law. The pay equity law is a state requirement imposed on all local units of government in Minnesota. It is approximately about thirty years old now, developed in the early to mid-eighties. And it's intended to bring gender equity to pay scales in the public sector. Under the law, there is mandatory reporting by each unit of local government once every three years. And the next report for us is due in about two months, on January thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. And the data entered into that report must reflect our employee demographics and our pay rates as of December thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. The idea behind pay equity here is that you look at the comparable worth or the quantitative value of each job within our organization. So each of our city positions have to have a numeric value to them. They have to be worth so many points. And then positions that are worth more points should be paid more than positions that are worth fewer points. It's the basic principle going on here. Tonight, I wanna give you an introduction and an overview and make sure that you understand and feel comfortable where, where we are headed. I will have some documents for you to adopt at your next council meeting on December seventeenth. But given that that is the final meeting of the year and we will have to take action that night, I wanted to kind of lay the foundation for that tonight. When I'm standing in front of you two weeks from tonight, you will be asked to adopt two things. One is a book of written job descriptions for all sixty-four positions in the city organization. And the other is a non-union pay plan, which lists each of our non-union pay rates and their starting and top salary for the timeframe that the pay plan is adopted. The pay plan provides kind of a good explanation of why we do pay equity. And you'll see here that we have this pay grade seven. And within pay grade seven, you have an accountant, building inspectors, fire marshal, and our maintenance supervisors in public works. So four jobs in four distinctly different departments that do different things. Why are they all in pay grade seven? They're all in pay grade seven because they've been found to have similar points values or they are of comparable worth to the city organization. As we go through this, I'll explain a little bit more at how we decide what the net value of a position is. But the first step towards doing this is to have written job descriptions for each of the positions within the city structure. You saw me with a chart up here earlier this evening that showed that we have a hundred and thirty-three point nine F T Es. Those position, or those people and employees are spread over sixty-four different job classes. Many of our job classes have only one position that, one person that occupies that position, but others such as, we have seventeen maintenance operators or we have thirty-six patrol officers, so. The last citywide review of our job descriptions was done fifteen years ago. Since that time, we have written new job descriptions for newly created positions. And we have revised and updated job descriptions sporadically as positions have become open and we're getting ready to post. It's always our practice to go through and see if there's any changes needed. One of the things that results from that is that the book of city job descriptions has been written by many different authors, each using kind of their own preferred style and language or approach. So over time, as you tweak, you end up with kind of a conglomeration of things instead of a unified system. Our update is intended to reflect current city operations and job duties. This is not a restructuring. What you see on paper in these job descriptions should reflect the way we are operating in two thousand thirteen. It's not an effort to remake anybody's job, job duties or change something moving forward. We're also trying to get to a standardized format and language. Like I said, over fifteen years, the job descriptions have many different authors and, you know, somebody can find six different ways to say the exact same thing. A quick note on what our job descriptions are not. They are not an exhaustive list of every task that an employee performs. They are a bigger picture view of the duties and responsibilities. And they are not a reflection of the incumbent employee. So they refer, this is particularly true when it comes to qualifications for the position. They, we may have people in certain job positions that have a bachelor's degree, but that doesn't mean that the job description requires it or that we would look only at people who have bachelor's degrees if that position became open. The updating process has been for myself to go through each of the job descriptions, edit, in some cases, just tweak, in other cases, completely redraft to reflect the current duties and responsibilities. The draft is then reviewed by the employee or employees in the position, the direct supervisor, and the department head. All have a chance to read the draft and provide comments and suggestions and feedback and so on. And then we incorporate those comments into a second draft. I should note that in the case of the police department, all of the updated job descriptions have been reviewed and approved by the Civil Service Commission, as is required by civil service rules. In this process, we are looking at internal organization and equity. When you look within a department, and I'm using the planning staff as an example here, you should see a flow. And I actually wish I could have gotten the arrows in this graphic to go up instead of down. But as positions build in responsibility, you should see increasing duties, not in terms of quantity, but increasing levels of responsibility, increasing levels of discretion exercised, increasing independence in the work performed by those staff members. You also see things like increasing years of experience or formal training and education required to hold the position. So a planner position currently requires just one year of experience in the field, whereas a senior planner requires three years of experience in the field. And the community development director position, off the top of my head, I believe, is five to seven years of experience. So it builds as you go through the department. Additionally, we look across departments. And you would expect to see similarities in what we expect of the community development director as a department head to what we expect of the public works director and what we expect of the finance director. Similarly, if you look at the job descriptions for administrative assistant, you'll see that they're roughly, you know, two-thirds to three-quarters the same across each department. Then the other quarter to a third reflects the unique tasks of being the administrative assistant in that specific department. So as we do this, we are adding universal language to some job descriptions. And these are two examples, two things that we expect across the board of our employees and we consider part of their job is the ability to work with the public in a friendly, tactful manner and the ability to establish and maintain positive professional working relationships. You will see those two lines in every single job description brought forward to you on the seventeenth for approval. You'll also see some common language, not universal, not in everyone, but in groups of employees. So if you actually sat down and read this book, you'd think, "I've seen that line before, this is starting to sound like a broken record." In the police department, we universally have the expectation that people maintain a high level of integrity and ethical performance at all times. In the department head job descriptions, you will see an expectation that they continuously evaluate the department's processes and service and develop options for improvement. that they continuously evaluate the department's processes and service and develop options for improving. That notion of continuous improvement is part of every department head's job duties. And a third example is some supervisory language. In every position that has a supervisory responsibility, you'll see this third bullet point reflective of the people they actually supervise, and that's kind of in a nutshell what we expect of supervisors. And if you're in a supervisory role and you're not doing that, then you are not meeting the requirements of your position. Another theme that you will see running throughout is a new desired qualification, and that is fluency in a second language in addition to English that has a recognized presence in the community. This has been added to every position within the city that has public contact to it. So our frontline staff at reception desks and service counters, our inspectors who are out in the field interacting with the public, our police officers, our firefighters, right up to the city administrator. We aren't at the point where there is the qualified applicant pool to make this a, an absolute requirement for the position, but in each of these cases, it's our opinion that what would make a candidate even better than the pool, the average person in the pool, is to have these foreign language skills and to be able to communicate directly with our increasingly diverse population. I got myself a little out of order because this wasn't in the PowerPoint, but I intended to show you kind of the shell or the skeleton of the new job descriptions. On each one, you will see the position title, the department. In some cases, they're also within a specific division of that department, and you'll see that noted. Who the position reports to? Status. Status means are you full-time, are you part-time, as well as are you hourly or are you salaried? Pay grade, which is one of the things we're trying to determine with this process, is everybody in the appropriate pay grade. And then approved will be hopefully December seventeenth, 2013, the date that these get approved. As you work your way down from the header, you will see a summary. One or two-sentence description, a very big-picture description of what the job is. Then essential duties and responsibilities. On average, you're gonna see ten to fifteen bullet points of the big-picture duties and responsibilities. Why does this position exist? What do they do that's essential to the operation of the city? Some positions that are fairly focused, you may see a little bit on the smaller side. You might only see seven or eight essential duties. And other positions that are widely varied, working on the finance director and city clerks one, I think I barely kept it under twenty of things that we felt had to be in there. So that varies a little bit, but again, it's a big picture, not a laundry list. Knowledge, skills, and abilities required to do the position. Qualifications. Your minimum qualifications are primarily gonna read a formal education. Does it need a high school degree? Does it need an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree? In what field does the degree need to be? It's also gonna tell you how many years of experience are required to be considered for the position. In minimum qualifications, you will also see licenses and certifications that are required. So to be a police officer, you have to be licensed by the Minnesota Board of Police Officer Standards and Training Postboard. So you'll see that in their job description. Our building inspectors are licensed by the state of Minnesota. Our facilities maintenance workers have boilers licenses to take care of and maintain our boilers. So you'll see licenses and certifications in there as well. Desirable qualifications are again, those things that if we can find them in an applicant, great. They make that applicant an even stronger contender for the position, but we will look at people that do not have those desired qualifications. And lastly, is the physical demands and working conditions. This is placed in there largely to ensure our compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We state upfront what the physical demands of the position are. How much do you have to lift? Do you have to be able to walk? Do you have to be able to walk over regular floors or over a construction site where the terrain is uneven and so on? What kind of noise are you exposed to? Are you exposed to dust or chemicals or pollutants? Do you need to bend, twist, crawl, climb, reach? All things that say a firefighter needs to be able to do. So if you've got a bad shoulder or a bad knee, that might cause some concern. But we state those physical demands of the position upfront, and then we respond if we end up with an employee or an applicant that needs some kind of accommodation, so. That's the basic structure or the shell of the job descriptions that you will be seeing for each of the sixty-four positions. The remaining steps in the process, like I said, job descriptions have gone out to all employees. We're in pretty good shape. The public works department is currently reviewing theirs now, and they are the final department. Once the job descriptions are in good shape, employees complete a position questionnaire. And these have also been sent out and collected back from all departments and are currently pending in the public works department. That position questionnaire asks employees for their view of their position. It says, who do you communicate with? Who do you interact with? What level of work do you do? What level of supervision do you receive? How supervised are you? And how much supervision do you exercise, if any, of other people? So the employee gets to go through and rate their position. And then the supervisor goes through, reviews what the employee answered, and rates the position from the supervisor's perspective or view of the world. All of those questionnaires go off to a consultant. We have hired Springstead, who is a regular advisor to the city on financial matters. And they will be pointing each of the positions using the written job description and the questionnaire. When they point a position, they give a position points for the training required to do the job, the level of work, is it entry level? Is it routine? Is it kind of the same work every day? Or is it highly varied and something that you need to be able to switch gears on a regular basis? The physical demands of the work, the independence of your actions, the supervision you exercise, years of experience required, human relation skills, working conditions and hazards, and the impact of the end results of the work that you do. So going back to our sample of pay grade number seven here, accountant, building inspector, fire marshal, maintenance supervisor have all been found to have a similar number of points, and that's why they're all in grade seven. But they might be in grade seven for a different reason. Some of those positions require a bachelor's degree. So they get points for formal education required. But maybe they don't supervise anybody, so they're gonna get a zero in supervision exercised. And they might work in an office setting where there's relatively few inconveniences or hazards or dangers, so their points for working conditions are probably gonna be relatively low. You look at maintenance supervisors, and our maintenance supervisors supervise an entire crew of people ranging from, I think, seven to ten people. They have hazards and dangers, including getting up and supervising snow plowing operations in the middle of the night and so on and so forth. So they may be scoring points in different categories. And the end result is there's multiple ways to get to the number of points that place you in position seven. Not everyone is in grade seven for the same reason. You could have gotten points in any one of those categories. Does that make sense? Once we have points for each position, we group positions with similar points values into the non-union pay plan and bring that forward for your approval. And we use that data to file this report in January that needs to be filed with the state of Minnesota. So, as I said, the real action comes two weeks from tonight on December seventeenth, when you will be asked to update the book of, or approve the updated job descriptions and a non-union pay plan for the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions or to discuss any things that you have concerns about. The goal is to try to make you as comfortable as possible with the action that needs to be taken on the seventeenth.
Council Layman.
How do we get to look at that before, between now and then?
I have three copies of this book on hand for anyone that liked some, and I would be happy to print up more. We were not certain how many council members wanted to read page by page all job descriptions.
Is Springstead's done with their work?
They are not. They are still working on it.
Okay, when will they be done?
Very, very close to the December seventeenth deadline.
So basically, we are being asked to approve something that we haven't seen, and it won't be done until right before we see it.
You will see it at the time you approve it, but unfortunately, no, there will not be a lot of review time in advance.
And what happens if we disagree with it and it goes into January? We've got till January thirty-first?
We have till the end of January to file the report, but the report needs to reflect what we paid people on December thirty-first. So if you choose not to adopt an updated pay plan on the seventeenth, we will have to file the report based on this year's pay plan and hope that we are found in compliance. If we are not found in compliance, we will get a correction order and a timeframe to correct our areas of non-compliance.
So Council Layman, can I ask, what are you concerned about?
Well, it seems like we probably should have started this process a little earlier, and we probably should have laid it out so that we wouldn't be put in a position to be forced to approve something that we haven't necessarily looked at.
Council Wyden.
Sounds like you put a lot of work into it. And it's, and from what, correct me if I'm wrong, the job descriptions are done? From your end?
Yes.
The pointing system is the only thing that we're waiting for Springstead for?
Yes.
That we can take and evaluate from the pointing system we've used in the past. And that's a page or two.
The pointing system is what we are waiting for, although I take full responsibility for the timeline on this project. I've known all year that it needed to be done. Other workload demands got in the way of devoting the time and energy that this project required. So I certainly would have preferred to have been in front of you with this project in September or October. That's not the way the workload played out over the course of the year. And so we are doing the best we can with what we've got at this point.
Not sure it would have risen to the top of my desk that quick.
Mr. McNeil.
Yeah, I'll just attest to the fact that, I mean, the human resources staff and especially Ms. Wilson have been working extremely hard on this, but we also, I mean, talking about what we discussed earlier tonight with the budget, there were eight positions to hire this year, and those came in as a higher priority than dealing with this sort of thing. This also points to the fact that, you know, you add management interns and things like that for additional help for major projects such as this. It's unfortunate that we are in December that we're looking at this now, but unfortunately, that's what we have.
Could have hired a consultant sooner.
The consultant still needed to have the work done locally here.
So I get to read this over my Christmas vacation. Thanks.
Council Clay.
I think if there, the descriptions are available now. Missing is the pay grade that's...
Point system.
Yeah, that's, that's not a big deal. If you wanna spend the time to look through all of these, these job descriptions, I've done that before with union stuff at work, and it's right up there with chewing tin foil.
Well, and as well, this, that's very much, Council Layman, in my opinion, that's very much in in-the-details-weeds kind of thing that we expect staff to handle and staff to take care of and staff, we pay them, everyone, a lot of money to handle those things and make sure that they are going the direction that they are going, and our responsibility is overriding policy and how this, that Ms. Wilson presented to us, works. And so if we are comfortable with how the policy works, that's our role, not necessarily if all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted within each little description, is my opinion.
This says, "Job description approval by council is required by the Plan A form of government," which we are.
You are absolutely correct.
So this is, this is our responsibility to read these documents. So I'll take a copy tonight and start reading it when I get home.
Beautiful. Any other questions? Council Heisman.
I'll take a copy also.
Any other questions? Is there any motion or anything you need?
I do not need any motion tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Moving on to eleven D two, ratification of 2014 to sixteen sergeants' labor agreement. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a request to ratify a negotiated contract with the city sergeants' union. As a reminder, the city has three union groups that represent approximately fifty percent of our full-time workforce, and all three union contracts are set to expire December thirty-first of this year. We've had several negotiating sessions with the sergeants' union and arrived at the following contract agreement that we ask you to ratify tonight. The terms of the contract highlighted as what's being changed are as follows. Contract provides a three percent general wage increase each year of the contract, and it is a three-year contract. A three-year contract is the maximum duration contract allowed by state law for public sector employees. Provides for a twenty-five dollar increase in the uniform allowance in 2014, and then another twenty-five dollar increase in the amount for 2016. It adjusts the maximum amount of vacation that employees can have on the books at any one time. You used to have to be here, I think, ten years before you could have three hundred hours on the books, and this makes it so you only have to be here four years before you can have three hundred hours on the books. This will align the sergeant's contract with the existing language in the patrol officer's contract and resolve a problem we have when we promote somebody from patrol to sergeant and then tell them they have to burn vacation really, really fast because otherwise they are gonna be over the max. The union has asked to trade their Good Friday holiday for Easter as a holiday. It's a one-for-one trade. It keeps them in alignment with all other employee groups in terms of total numbers of holidays per year. It reduces the number of wage steps from five to three. And the reason for doing this is that the first two wage steps in the wage scale result in a sergeant making less than a patrol officer. Since in my time here, we have absolutely always promoted from within, we've never used the first two steps of the wage scale. We start newly promoted sergeants at step three because that is the first step that provides them with a pay increase. So in the interest of being more clear about what the actual utilized wage scale is, it just prints those top three steps. It includes an agreement to reopen Article thirty of the contract, which relates to special duty pay in the case that additional special duty assignments are created during the contract term. Currently, special duty assignments are being assigned as the investigation sergeant or being assigned to the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. They both carry an extra sum per month. At the top of my head, I believe it's two hundred and eighty dollars per month. Currently, there are no other special duty assignments ever given to the sergeants. They are concerned that we might create some during the duration of this contract, and they wanted our assurance that if we did that, we would meet and negotiate a wage for that. And lastly, it realigns the performance pay system, which is something that was put in place approximately twenty years ago in both the patrol and sergeant's contracts. We're renaming it into an incentive pay system. The new program emphasizes education. It pays officers more for having a bachelor's degree, more for having a master's degree, and more for taking continuing education throughout their career. Pays them an additional lump sum for performing community service while off duty. It has a fitness component, which requires them to meet certain national fitness standards known as the Cooper Fitness Standards. And it pays more for foreign language skills as we view an officer that can speak multiple languages as being more valuable to us than one that can speak only English. So it incentivizes those things that we think make for a more valuable officer, so. The overall cost of the contract is estimated to fall between thirty-seven and forty thousand dollars for budget year 2014. That can be accommodated within the budget that you adopted earlier tonight and does not require any amendments or anything like that. The reason for the variation is it kind of depends on how much over time the sergeants work, exactly how much we pay out to them. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Council Layman.
Does SROs fall into the special duty assignment?
They do, but we do not have SROs from the sergeant ranks. We only have them in the patrol ranks.
And then the performance pay system? I thought we were going to a pay-for-performance instead of the incentive pay, and now it looks like we're going back to incentive pay, but it basically means the same thing as the criteria.
The move we've been undertaking for many years is moving away from longevity towards a pay-for-performance. And I would consider this consistent with that. With the sergeant's contract, we've now reached the point where no new sergeants can get longevity. We have one sergeant remaining that's on longevity, and he's allowed to remain on that pay plan. All the other current sergeants and any future sergeants will only have this incentive pay program for them, available to them.
Which includes the same items that the pay-for-performance did.
We are getting rid of two items in this contract. We currently pay for something known as a skill assessment, and we pay for a positive performance review. We are wrapping those into the base wage with this and eliminating them as components as they become something that everybody gets and not a distinguishing factor between and amongst employees. So we are phasing out... So we are phasing out those two and, um, we are adding a foreign language incentive pay. We currently do not have that in the contract language.
Further questions? All right, seeing none. Anybody have a motion? Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize the appropriate officials to enter into the attached labor agreement with the law enforcement labor services on behalf of the city's police sergeants.
Do you have a second? Somebody, Councilor Clay, any discussion? Uh, while we're in discussion, I'd like to say I'm very pleased with the agreement. So nice work by everyone on, on getting this done, including, uh, the union and the sergeants for working together, did a lot of good things, um, into this agreement that will help everyone. So I'm extremely proud of that. So very nice work. Everyone, any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're going to go to item number eleven E one, approval of the, uh, South Bridge Community Park Plan and Authorization to Advertise for Construction Bids Resolution Number Seventy-three ninety-two. Thank you for sticking for the long haul, Ms. Polly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer resolution.
Sure. Let me zoom this out. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm here tonight bringing to you our final concept or our final plan, not a concept plan, but our final plan for South Bridge Community Park, formerly known to many people as Parcel Seventy-Five. Um, but this is the plan that was developed by WSB and Associates, associates based on the concept plan that the council approved on August seventh of this year. Um, this is a plan that we, for this park, we've been working on it since last year, uh, two thousand and twelve. Uh, throughout the process, we have had a concept plan that we developed in-house that the council saw and allowed us to go forward with. Then we held a community meeting on April first, um, which we didn't have a very large turnout. Um, but we did send over three hundred and fifty notifications to the surrounding houses and townhomes that are all along this area in South Bridge. Um, we also had a comment period for about, well, from April first to April fifteenth, so about two weeks that we received comments for and you did see those comments come back when you saw the concept plan back in August. The, uh, Dog Park Committee was reconvened and about thirty people signed up for that. At a meeting, we have typically, typically about fifteen people show up constantly. Um, that have looked at the park, all the different concepts, given feedback on it as well. Um, they have all, we've also had this updated on the website for people to comment if they needed to or if they wanted to, uh, and then it's been to the park board a number of times. Uh, it was meant to brought forward to last, uh, meeting. However, the estimate that came back, which we'll discuss in just a second, was higher than I thought it was going to be or higher than we anticipated and we, the budget we had set for this park was a very rough estimate because we have not built a park of this size before. We've never built a dog park, so we didn't really have any rough figures to go off of. We had never had a cost estimate put together for this park. So, um, we did, with this plan, we had a cost estimate when we hired WSB and they came forward with that. So I did take it back to the park board this month or this last month in November for them to look at the whole plan and to look at the cost estimate and decide whether we were going to do the park in phases, whether we were going to reallocate funds within the park reserve fund to get this park constructed or whether they wanted to do something else in order to get it constructed. Um, you know, maybe make some changes to the plan and that sort of thing. So what the park board has recommended to you tonight, uh, from their November meeting is that they like this concept plan. They think it includes everything that we do want in this park, being that it's a large community park. It's thirty-five acres on that north side of South Bridge Community, or South Bridge Park. Um, it contains the dog park and the nature trails, so we wanted to keep it more of a natural area, being the only oak savanna. One of the only oak savannas left in town. They also wanted to incorporate that hockey rink. Whether we build it as a concrete rink or not, it is something that we can discuss as we get construction costs in. Um, but they, the estimate for this park came in at one point five million dollars. Um, that includes the concrete hockey rink, the nine-acre dog park with fencing around. The fence, the dog park itself only has egg lime trails in it. And then the, um, trails that are in white that you see on this plan are all co, are all, um, blacktop trails that are ten feet right now in the estimate. We can go down to eight feet because this is not a regional. These are not regional trails that would go through here. Um, the parking lot is a large expense because it's a drive-through. The way that we have it designed here is a drive-through parking lot. We do currently already have this access off of South Bridge Parkway um, for the anticipation of a park where all of the, um, utilities are stubbed in. And then we have the opening in South Bridge Parkway over to the west that we could come out on. Um, so it's a lot of bituminous, but it winds through the lower area of that prairie area still hidden by a berm, so it would be more hidden from the traffic going on South Bridge Parkway, but allow for different parking areas for people using the general park and then people using the dog park. And then there are some structures on there that would be, you know, some small shelters that we'd like eventually with the park, whether that's built with a general contractor or not, is something that we can, we would discuss too as we go out for construction on this. Um, so in your packets, I did include, um, this plan as well as the, uh, park reserve fund. So the recommendation from the park board is that I need to look at the park reserve fund, reallocate funds within that based on revenue that we have received, revenue that we anticipate to receive and other projects that we're doing, um, to be able to build this park as we want it built, um, in twenty fourteen at that one point five million or less, depending upon what changes we make per, um, some of them that I had already mentioned. So what I did is I did pull up our entire park reserve CIP. So this is different than what you saw during the budget cycle because I did reallocate some of these fundings. Um, if I can zoom in a little bit. So this does show what we have received in twenty four, or twenty thirteen so far, our total revenue and park dedication fees. If you can see that, um, is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Then with our expenditures, this is set up. Julie should be here because she can explain her spreadsheet a little bit better than I can. But, um, basically in twenty thirteen, we had a one point two million dollar expenditure for parks. And all of these parks are, or all these projects are being completed. The Green Meadows Park was adding the additional parking spaces to that park that we, um, did as a second phase. The twenty thousand for the sports complex was actually a donation that we received from the soccer association and you'll see that in twenty fourteen as well. So up here, um, it's showed in our revenue. The Riverside Fields Park is currently under construction. It will be finally completed in the spring when we do the seeding because the seeding window was missed, um, this fall. But that's the last thing to do on it is the seeding and the striping of the tennis court and the parking lot. Um, Huber Park improvements, that ten thousand dollars is to do a design of a shelter that we have planned for twenty fourteen and that's the ninety thousand dollars. Uh, Westminster Park, twenty thousand dollars. If you've gone out there recently, you'll see that Public Works added a better trail, um, to the hockey rink so that we can flood it easier without driving completely through the park. And then they've added another trail from the parking lot around the north side of, of the hockey rink to the new shelter that was built, um, because that's how people were using it when they rent the shelter and do events there anyway. Um, so we actually put a trail in there that makes it a less, more accessible to our ball fields as well. Um, in Corey Lake Park, this three hundred and fifty thousand, um, is the public access that is currently going in. The culvers are in and it's, it's getting to where, um, you can see the park and see how we're going to get into it, which is really exciting. Um, so that's twenty thirteen. Those are our projects. For twenty fourteen then, what I did, um, originally what you saw during the budget in twenty fourteen, we had one specific project that I moved, uh, to twenty fifteen and that is a joint high school development site. Um, that project currently, the five hundred and fifty thousand that showed there is actually three hundred and fifty thousand that we had allocated out of our funds from the park reserve and two hundred thousand that we had anticipated the school district might tor, put towards that project. That, uh, project is anticipated or was planned to possibly be a development of turf fields on that ten acres that's on the corner of Seventeenth Avenue and Spencer Street on the current high school campus. However, at this point, we, um, cannot plan anything for that site until we know for sure what the school district will be doing as far as a second high school or what their needs are after that is decided. Um, so we're not willing to commit and put anything in that ground there without knowing what that will be. And that will be at least probably a year out from now. Um, so we moved that to twenty fifteen. And if that site doesn't work, then we still hope to possibly do some joint projects with the school district, either on that ten acres or on the ten acres at top of park, um, to possibly build turf fields there or additional ball fields. And that has been a conversation with the park board and the associations over the last year as well. We are aware that athletic fields are still in need. If the high school does happen or if a second school of any sort does happen with the school district, we will partner with them, hopefully again too, to be able to do our joint powers like we do with our current field structure and be able to use those fields as well as they use our fields and stuff like that and, and maybe upgrade some of those for our association use. So that was pushed out to twenty fifteen. Um, so in twenty fourteen, I put in the budget of the one point four million. So it comes to about one point five million with, um, the sixty thousand that we're spending this year on the design portion of it. And the reason why it's one point five million versus the one point five-two-seven that, um, I have in the thing, in the, in the memo is because I do believe there are changes that we can make to get down to that one point four-four um, with the design construction and that's with the reduction of the trail with that we don't necessarily need the ten feet down to eight feet. Um, with some work we have been working with the dog park group that when we do develop this, we want them to take ownership as well, possibly adopt the park and even, you know, do some help with fundraising of those shelters that we could put out there and any picnic tables that they want to see or any special amenities that they think would be beneficial to the dog park group itself. Um, so we allocated the, the one point four-four in two thousand and fourteen. The twenty thousand, that's revenue coming from the sports complex. Um, and then the ninety thousand is the shelter at Huber Park. If we do that, we have one point six million in expenditures next year, um, in twenty fourteen. We have, uh, we have a balance at the end of this year of one point three million and then we'll bring in our estimated revenue to be brought in with some developments is about eight hundred thousand next year, which does give us a balance at the end of twenty fourteen still of five hundred thousand to bring forward to twenty fifteen. If you do look at twenty fifteen, our biggest project there is a development of Corey Lake Park. Um, so that does, by moving some items around in our park reserve to get this park built, it does not give us sufficient funds to complete Corey Lake Park as our expected revenues are right now. However, um, there are quite a few grants that we do plan on applying for with the Waterski Association for that park. So that will help with the funding. Um, there may be other developments that I don't have on here that are coming because I have heard some. I just don't want to put them on paper until we, as staff, feel more comfortable that they would be completed. Um, so there is, by twenty fifteen, we hope to get more revenue in. Or that may be a park that we look at and put the trails in first and the buildings are phased too. But at least the fifty thousand dollars in twenty fourteen that I have allocated in there would design the park and do that whole process, we, which we plan on having a year-long process of that anyway uh, because of the size of that park. So with this, I'm bringing you forward to tonight to accept the, uh, plan for South Bridge Community Park as recommended by the park board and developed by WSB and get your authorization to go out for the construction bid for the parts of this park that needed to have a general contractor. When I say that, I, I say that because there may be some portions of this park that we can do with our staff or with in-kind work of, um, local businesses that we would work with and that sort of thing, such as possibly the fencing. Nothing has been decided right now, but that's what we would work out actually before we go to bid. Um, but there may be options that we don't need to have a general contractor for the entire project. But we will need to bid part of it out.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Heisman?
Jamie, do you have a rough estimate on how much the fencing is going to cost to be installed by anybody?
Yes. Do you have the cost estimate? The fencing gates and signage, we have estimated at seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, the reason I ask is, uh, when it was brought up years ago about it, the construction teacher up at the school said he'd be very interested in bringing the boys out there to do that.
Okay.
Where they could install a fence and everything. All the city would have to do is pay for the materials and they'd put everything up.
And I can work with them on, that's a, we are going to be putting in that large, uh, wire fencing in, so not, it's not chain link.
Yeah.
Um, which comes in the rolls and we would put wooden posts that would have to be come in. Um, so it is a fencing that we may be able to get assistance on and that's why I brought that up.
I'd definitely contact them and that'll save you some money right there for other things.
And you meant the boys and girls in the construction class, right? That's what I thought you said.
Students.
Yeah.
Students.
Councilman Lehman?
And the girls that are boys even. The, uh, this is way over budget. Almost three times over budget. The question I have for you is, uh, the cost of the, the blacktop paved trails. Do you have that broke out?
Yes, I do.
How much is it?
The trail, um, so this trail from the cul-de-sac to the entrance.
Yep.
Um, which is a more of an emergency access that's required for us to put in because of the townhomes having no other access.
Yep.
That right now is designed at fourteen feet wide fire lane, um, and an extra thickness of, of, I don't have that on here, but I know it's extra thick from, but anyway, that section right there is, uh, sixty thousand dollars for that trail. For that portion.
Okay.
Thirty thousand dollars in soil corrections possibly.
And then how about the rest of the, what I'm looking at is, uh, it's kind of hard from my position here, but if you take this middle trail right here.
Mm-hmm.
That comes, yep, follow it straight up.
Yep.
And, and where it connects right there, if you just did that circle, so folks, and then make the outer area trail just a natural path.
Wood chips or something?
Uh, just natural path. Sign it off and walk it. Take the, just make a path. Kind of like it is down at the river bottoms. But how much would that save us on this? Because this project's way too expensive.
Um, right, here's the, the budget. And like I said before, when we put a number into the park reserve for this park, we did not base that off of any cost estimates because we did not do, we did not hire anybody to do a cost estimate for us of what this would cost us to actually build the park as it's designed now. When it was thought about, you know, maybe the dog park, maybe the hockey rink, but, um, there was nothing that that estimate was actually based off of. But if you look at this cost estimate, so this ten-foot wide trail, standard internal loop and parking lot trail, which is what I believe Matt, you're talking about, or Mr. Lehman, I'm sorry, you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, is along the parking lot here and this trail here.
Yep.
Is one hundred and two thousand at a ten-foot wide trail. Now, we could go down to eight feet. And the western loop, um, which is ten foot wide, which is this section here. Um, she has it estimated at ninety thousand, you know, with the soil correction. So you're looking at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand total for that section.
Yep.
So that could be a savings as well.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, just basically start it out as a dog park.
Yep.
And turn it into a one and a half million dollar.
And that, that was discussed with the park board as to whether they wanted to do it in phases and just get the dog park in right now and maybe a couple of trails or just do the hockey rink right now and a couple of trails and that, you know, they went back and forth. They had a pretty extensive discussion on that and it came down to that they felt that with the funds in the park reserve and the size of this park being thirty-five acres, um, they wanted to build it, they wanted to recommend that we build it completely to begin with and not do it in phases. Um, but to put it into perspective too, the last park that we just built Riverside Fields Park at seven hundred and seventy thousand, um, that's a seven-acre park. This is thirty-five acres. So, and, and the trails and the bituminous is quite a bit more than what we have there.
But on the bulk of this park, all you can do is walk and look.
It's a more of a passive use park, yes.
So, I mean, to go down and walk the river for the same effect for free. I just, something seems really expensive here and I'm not really putting my finger on it. I mean, you've got the itemized bill, but wow, that's a lot of money for a great big area of nothing.
Well, half of it is bituminous if you look at this with four hundred here.
I mean, it's a nice area of nothing, don't get me wrong, but this is a lot of money for just a natural area to walk, you know?
Councilwoman Whiting?
It, Mr. Lehman is right. It's expensive. It did come in a lot more than we thought. Um, I think we can do some things with, uh, when the final cost estimates come in, um, some of the fencing and the, and the lanes and things. What is this going to do to your park dedication, your, your CIP plan? Uh, it's going to cut you back quite a bit. I mean, whoa. Is that, is that comfortable for you to gut your plans there?
Well, that's, I mean, that's up to, to you as the council to decide if it is going to bring it down to pretty much nothing, especially if we build Corey Lake Park or build, start building it. Um, it's going to take the park reserve down. Um, it's gonna take the park reserve down with what we have anticipated to come in right now, without knowing any further development coming in or any, anything else. Um, yes, it will bring it down, and that's, we've been talking about this for a number of years, but the park reserve is the only thing that funds the park reserve. At this point, is park dedication fees that come in from development, whether it's residential or commercial, industrial. Um, at some point, we will as a city have to look at how else we fund this, this fund if we're gonna continue to build parks or build trail connections and build amenities. Um, and at some point, you know, maybe it comes down to that we do an open space request from the community uh for funding for, you know, whatever we have left to do or trail connections, that sort of thing. Um, or we start allocating funds from other, other areas, you know, or, or we just don't continue to build out and let it build up again. You know, we could put some of these projects on hold as well and let it build up until we have funds to, to build a park as we want it. The only major park that is on the plan after this one to build at this time is Corey Lake. And now with public access, that's moved up, so.
Other thoughts? Um, I would agree partially. Something that we need to absolutely get done, um and something should be done well, uh especially 'cause Southbridge, we don't have much for war or anything for other major parks out in Southbridge. There are a couple of small neighborhood parks, but nothing of significance in that uh majority of that region uh through there, so. I would also like to see a couple of things come down in cost, so it, is there consensus that we want that a little bit? What is acceptable, and I would definitely, I don't, my personal opinion is I don't want us to decide what comes down in cost. I'd like to send it back to park board if that is our, is that, that is the goal we wanna see, if we wanna have it come down to a million dollars or something like that. Um, so that we fit close to the budget, so that we are able to do more in the future with other parks, is my opinion. Um, and my thought is that outside ring could be not asphalt. Um, just like you said, it's some pervious material. Um, or looking at the parking lot, different configurations of the parking lot, things like that. So what does everybody think?
Counsel Whitey?
Is cement necessary in the hockey rink?
No, it's not.
We looked at different parking lot configurations. Is this a, a cheaper version of some of those uh we looked at or?
This is not, no, um. By re, I mean, the parking lot right now in the cost estimate is four hundred thousand dollars itself. If we were to, to not make it a drive-through and make it a, a drive-in and a drive-out in one area, um, you know, anything we do to reduce the size of the bituminous would bring that cost down. Um, you know, what I, what I asked of you tonight is to, if you have a, a set amount that you would like to get us under, that would be something that you could set tonight and we, we could work towards. Um, you know, we don't know, this is the overall estimate a- as if we would have a general contractor build the entire park. So we would hopefully do it lo, do it last by, you know, maybe getting some of the work done by our staff, by assistance of volunteers, by the dog park committee coming up with some of the funds for some of the things. So right now, I'm kinda looking at a over, a, a maximum amount.
So what we could do is approve this as it is right now and get deductions that we can take off?
Bid, bid alternatives.
Right. Before we would go, before, before staff could go to bid or out for bid for certain projects, I would have to work with um our WSB and associates to determine what areas do need a general contractor. You know, the bituminous areas or concrete would have to have a general contractor. And we get price quotes on those if we do it as a whole or, or less, and that's where we can decide whether we do bituminous on the, on the hockey rink, whether we don't pave it at all, or whether we do concrete, so that would be the, the deduction there. Um, but I would also work with the other groups to see what areas then I don't have to go to bid for. So all of the funds would come together as, before we built the park. It'll come to you.
I like that. Um, Counsel Lehman?
If uh the fire access fourteen wide, um heavy-duty built trail, if we don't build this park, that's not there. So that doesn't really serve the park. That serves the fire department's access.
Correct.
So any cost, kinda like the city doing a hot, doing a road in a neighborhood, any oversizing cost, the city picks up. We need to take that section of that trail, price it as a standard trail like the rest of the trail, and any cost above and beyond that for fire access shouldn't really be a park cost. It's not a park asset. It's a fire department's asset and a community-wide asset for access. So I don't think that portion should be a park cost.
Yeah.
Um, and then I would ask if it has to come into the cul-de-sac or if it could come down one or two streets, which would shorten up that area. I can, I understand where the fire chief is probably going. They wanna be up at the top so they have access to the whole thing, but you actually get that if you come down one block, because the only thing stopping you is the three houses right there, and if they're on fire, you're right there anyway.
Mr. Looney?
Mister, Counsel, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Lehman, members of the council. That cul-de-sac street is the only public street in that development.
Okay.
So that's why it is connected like it is.
Oh, we'd have to do eminent domain again.
Well, yeah, if you wanna do that.
We, we did inquire that with Mr. Looney when we did the design, we had that conversation.
Mr. Neil?
Uh, let's, uh, if I could suggest, going back to uh Ms. Polly's suggestion, could you give us a parameter in terms of what you are comfortable with spending on this of city funds? And then refer it back to the park record advisory board and they can comment, and whether it's through volunteer labor or uh simple downsizing, we could meet that and bring it back to you.
I'm actually okay with, with myself putting it forward as it is and being able to deduct if, if necessary, change plans as possible to meet. Um, where was it budgeted at again?
Six hundred thousand.
So if we were at a million dollars, I would be.
Under a million, million or under.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
And I don't think it need, it doesn't need to go back to the park board for that, right?
Just we bid alternatives?
Right, I would, right.
Get alternatives and, and roll with it from there and let park board recommend what alternatives to get to a million dollars and we'll be.
Correct.
Providing the bids come in.
Right, exactly, depending on where the bids are at.
Hmm.
So that's where we're comfortable is around or under a million dollars. Um, so if there are motions, what do we need to adopt? With our resolution, we need to do anything or just pass the resolution?
Bid alternatives.
Can't we just send us back to the park board to rework it?
But we, it doesn't, even if we send it back to the park board, what are they gonna rework until we get real numbers? I mean, they're not gonna know anything until we get real numbers. So, I mean, it could come in that the whole thing wants, it is a million dollars. I mean, this is, right?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, it's called, the, the resolution is gonna authorize WSB to prepare plans and specs. Those plans and specs are gonna come back before you, and presumably they're gonna have these alternates in it that will get the cost down to a million dollars, so.
So we're good with the resolution?
You can certainly refer it to the park board if you want, but all I'm saying is, this isn't gonna go out to bid without you seeing it. You have to see the plans and specs.
So the only thing missing is her list of bid alternates.
Yeah, by understanding direction would be is to prepare the bid alternate so the general, the, it's gonna be a public money, it's only gonna be a million dollars or estimate.
Right, but where, where does she get her list of bid alternates?
I'm assuming she'll be working with a consultant and.
Yeah. I will have to work with a consultant and we have to sit down and see what exactly on here that we don't have to go out, that she doesn't have to spec, that we don't have to go out for. Um, and then she'll put those plans and specifications together for the areas like the bituminous and the concrete work that we would, and the, the earth work that we would need a general contract for. Um, and then with that, you know, just for instance, one bid alternate would be the hockey rink. No paving or blacktop compared to concrete. Um, and I did put in the memo that if we, you know, didn't concrete it, then we could save a hundred and forty-five thousand, and that's with nothing underneath it. That's what we did at Riverside Fields Park. We don't have it paved at all. So that's, and, that's one of the ideas that we could bring forward. And then the reduction in the trails will definitely be something that we probably would not even do as an alternate. I think we're just gonna change those width of those trails and bid them out eight fe, eight feet instead of ten feet. So those sort of things I'll work with her on. Um, and then if we do have a volunteer group that can do fencing or we can do that in-house, you know, we'll take the cost she estimated, show you where that difference is of how we're gonna get it done at a lesser cost, where it's not an alternate, but it'll show you how that cost came down. Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? All right.
I'll try it.
Counsel Whitey?
Oh, oh.
Oh, we use the resolution. We don't need any changes.
You don't want any changes? All right. Uh, council, uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-three ninety-two, a resolution of the City of Shakopee approving plans for the Southbridge Community Park and authorization to advertise for bidding.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Um, with the caveat that what we've discussed here with the bid alternates are in the plans and specs.
All right, any further discussion?
That was what I was gonna add, and he said I didn't need to.
Well, it's not in the resolution, so it's in the motion.
Um, is, are, you're okay? Okay, so do you accept that?
Yes.
All right.
So the public dollars would be one million or less?
We didn't specify that.
We did, that's what we should.
Just the bill, alternatives.
Okay.
Clear?
We approved the resolution, except we added to the resolution that uh where it says uh approves hereby approved and specification that are completed in accordance with such approved plans, that part of the approved plans are gonna be bid alternates to get us down to what we agreed on as.
Where we get to.
Group of a million or under.
I'm picking Jews, winners and losers.
All right, is that clear, Smud? Everyone understand where we're at? You're okay, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Very much. Um, item twelve, council member reports. We'll start on this side. Counsel Whitey?
Okay, not a lot. Uh, did uh meet yesterday, uh attended the Scott County Agriculture Society's annual meeting. Uh, for those of you that haven't heard of that, that's the Scott County Fair Group. Um, fair made a profit of thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars uh this past summer. Uh, they're always looking for ways to improve the fair and are always looking for folks to volunteer next summer. They also added an autumn festival this fall, uh look, and uh look forward to en- enhancing that next year. Um, the driver-run demolition derby and the bull riding were a great success this year. Uh, on behalf of the Shakopee High School's lead group or leaders in education and diversity, they're collecting non-perishable food items and winter clothing this week. Uh, the public is encouraged to drop off donations at the greeter desk at the high school. Four schools are competing in a challenge to collect the, the most items, and one school will win, uh will be awarded a, a visit from the Minnesota Vikings to lead them in a pep rally. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
The uh, no, there's no other business location on this agenda, so I'll bring it up now. Um, resident, an elderly resident contacted me about the Trident development not having assisted living and subsidized units. So we need to have something checked in.
Check into that and I will uh talk to you after the meeting.
Yeah, I thought I had staff check into that.
Trident?
Yeah.
Okay.
One sixty-nine corridor canceled the one meeting. I don't know when the next one is. I haven't heard. And every day's I haven't heard from them either, so nothing to report on either one.
Counsel Clay?
Utilities Commission, um, pretty much has all of the water and electrical work done that they needed to get done this ye, year before the ground froze up on them. Uh, for all of the commercial businesses that, work that's been coming in lately, like TE Connectivity and Emerson and, and all those. Our uh projects went very well. They uh, there was a uh small power outage to twenty-four customers caused by one of our furry little friends up in the President's Edition. Uh, they had a particularly quick response to that power outage since one of the homes that lost power was the person on call had sp- spuck to handle that, so.
Helpful.
Yeah, so that worked out very well. And uh most, most importantly, they uh, they did uh manage to pass a resolution of appreciation for my four years of uh being a liaison there, and surprisingly enough, it passed unanimously.
Really? That's about all the appreciation you're gonna get, so.
Cost me twenty bucks apiece, and I had to buy him a beer.
All right, Counsel Heitzman?
I don't have a report, but I do have a counselor concern, and it's probably a little late with the snow starting to fly, but I did, a resident approached me about when they're street sweeping, they're sweeping the streets on the same day the trash is being collected. So the trash cans are down on the curb and they're not going up, you know, they're not kinda looping around it. So they may wanna time that out a little better to, if you see the trash containers, skip that street.
Mr. Looney?
I gotta make a plug for that. Um, they're not supposed to put the garbage cans in the curb and gutter line. They're supposed to leave it at the edge of the driveway, so if they have the garbage cans in the, in the curb, in the street, that's what they're not supposed to do.
Which street is it?
Residents want their streets swept, don't put your garbage cans outside the street.
Break leaves in the gutter either, they still do.
You know, I paid for thirty percent directly. I paid for the seventy percent indirectly, and I can't use it. Tell me when to park on it, tell me I can't put my leaves there. I can't use it. All I can do is drive out and get a speeding ticket and pay for it again.
I hate it when that happens. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, just a couple of things. Um, last, uh, I lost my place, sorry. Um, last week met with a group of Somali residents from Shakopee who are working on uh uh integration of the community and seeing how everybody can work better together with the uh county and city and everyone working. So that was a very good uh meeting, then on twenty-fifth, met with a business group over at Speed Dog. Um, just talked about economic development, what all is going on in Shakopee, so that was a uh very good meeting as well. Um, that's all I've got. Um, any other council concerns we've got? All right, entertain a motion to enter into closed session for labor negotiations and kick everyone out. Counsel Lehman?
Make a motion to go into closed session for labor negotiations.
I'll second that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor just wanted to add stra, labor negotiation strategy pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero three.
But you didn't put that in our memo.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, that's good with Counselors Lehman and Heitzman?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are going into closed session. Thank you very much, everyone for being here.